Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in the pleasure of this talk. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the government of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just as for all.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here tonight. The first hour, we're going to be receiving, exchanging information with the school. We've requested some information from them. They've sent us some replies back. But just so everybody in the audience understands, there will not be any audience participation with this. It's just, we have a public hearings in regards to the budget coming up down the street in the latter part of May, and at that time, it'll be open to the public. Item number one, budget presentation fiscal year 2019, 2020, school committee and matters related thereto.
Motion to begin said budget presentation.
Second.
And fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, 2020 with the school committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? And please, tonight, everybody, be conscious, please grab a mic, and if you're going to speak, you can get it in front of you, okay? Thank you very much.
The purpose of this evening's meeting is a discussion related to the budget and specifically the school department. Last week, the superintendent did send over the responses to the questions that the council had. Those questions started prior to our Saturday meeting a couple of weeks ago, with questions that came from the council president, questions that we kept track of during the meeting, as well as some questions that came in from the council afterward, so that you've received those. And I think the purpose of this evening is to continue the discussion with the school department.
Okay. All right, do I have any of my colleagues like to ask any questions? Or do you want to go through the list of questions that we sent out? I just want to make sure we accomplish this within the hour, and if there's any additional questions. I don't know if anybody has any additional questions since we received the answers to the questions that we did. Does anybody have any additional questions?
Yes.
Counsel Santos.
This is Craig. Welcome.
Thank you.
I received some information regarding the non-speaking students that you have in your class. Were teachers, any new teachers hired to fulfill non-English speaking students?
We have two teachers currently now, and the state's requiring us to hire 1.5 teacher, teachers. We have a teacher K through eight, and then the high school, high school teacher.
Now, these students that are non-speaking, majority of them, there was a large number from the, the parents attend the war college. Majority of them do speak English. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
No, majority of them do not speak English, and all of our English language learners are screened by law at the beginning of the school year, and they fall into different categories. And depending on the categories that they fall into, it's emerging, developing, command, they are required to have a certain number of hours of instruction.
Of the eighty-some students that are from foreign countries, how many of those do you think speak English?
So I don't exactly have that data in front of me. I know that we're, they are serviced by one teacher, K to eight, and one at the high school.
Thank you.
But we can get you where those students fall in terms of how they're tested.
Thank you. If you could send that information to all council people.
I will.
Thank you.
Any other counsel like to ask any questions? Superintendent Craig, I'd like to just, I just want to touch on some of the answers that you gave. I'm not going to touch on them all, because frankly, I was disappointed with some of your answers. I'll tell you straight, I was disappointed. Item, question number one, what are you doing to address the budget impacts based on anticipated decreased enrollment? This has been an ongoing question, year after year after year. Could, do you have your response in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Make sure you have the mic, please.
Yes.
Could you answer it? Yeah, could you answer it?
Sure. So we, we do review our enrollment data daily through our registration process to determine the number of students per grade and the classes required. We review cost selection at the high school, and typically close classes where there is low enrollment. The school committee will be voting on non-renewals for staff at the May School Committee meeting, and we will be evaluating whether retirees must be replaced based on district need. As you know, decreases in enrollment generally happen across grade lines, and don't necessarily allow for reduction of an entire class or an entire teacher.
Thank you. So my follow-up question would be, you've already submitted your request for this year, yet, yet you have not gone through these exercises to see what you, who you want to maintain, or who you want to eliminate?
We have.
In this process?
We have.
And they're?
We eliminated two teachers.
Okay.
At the elementary level, K to twelve, based on enrollment. And the non-renewals are just what they are for staff in the event that there is lower enrollment. Same with the retirees. So we take a look at every retiree, and we don't automatically replace that retiree. We take a look. For instance, there might, there is a, an art teacher at the high school who has retired. We're taking a look at this cost selection, and if we can eliminate that, or not replace that art teacher, we will do so, just like we did last year with music. Music was a non-renewal teacher, and we did not recall that teacher.
Because I'm not really, after all these years, still understanding your budget process, shouldn't that have been done prior to you making your budget request?
It was. We did review enrollment.
But you're still going to, you're still going to address it some more?
It's ongoing. Enrollment, it changes every day in the life of a school, especially in Middletown, with our military. Our military coming in, our military coming out. So we address it ongoing, and if we don't need to open another second grade, or close a second grade, we do that. So we have done enrollment projections. Our principals have given us those numbers. We screen, ask our parents, K through eight, are you planning on coming back, or are you moving? And we have those numbers in. And all that was accounted for in the budget that we proposed to the school committee and to you.
Which they approved. The school committee approved the budget, correct?
Yes.
All right, so, but we still have some more work to do on the budget? Is that what you're telling me?
We have more work, we have a closer look on enrollment.
Budgets are always ongoing, okay?
We have a closer look on enrollment. That, that happens typically, especially in Middletown.
Could you explain to me what your budget process is? Does the school committee and the school administration sit down and go line item by line item, get some feedback, maybe from some of the administration, the, I refer to it because you defined it as central administration, your upper, the principals, the vice principals. Do you, do you go through a budget process like that? I'm just curious to know, because from what I saw, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you presented, you presented a bottom-line budget to the school committee, and I don't know if there was any workshops done prior to that, but it looks like it was approved just in one night.
No. We have multiple workshops over the course from starting, we were discussing this already in the fall, but starting in January, we start with multiple workshops and extra meetings besides our one time a month.
Okay. So there's records of those meetings?
Yes, multiple, and they're all videotaped.
Okay, good.
So we have multiple workshops.
At each one, there was one of, at least one of the town council liaisons was there.
Okay. So you did line item by line item, and you went through this?
Yes.
Because what I saw, and I'm going to be honest with you, it looked like the budget was presented with the bottom line, and the school committee approved it.
Dennis and Terry both have attended every single one of them, so they can vouch for how many. And in regards to the enrollment, the war college is coming in in July, another class of war college. So that anticipation of enrollment, those projections that we have on a regular basis makes a difference. And because we don't know what grade they're coming in, because we don't have that information ahead of time, and that data from the military, which we have no control over, as Rose Marie had said before, we've had people show up with five special ed students in one family, or, you know, four children in four different grades in different schools. So we project, but based on this budget, we have gone through line item by a line item, identifying all the needs. The principals each came in and presented, special ed came in and presented, facilities presented, and every aspect of the budget was presented at our meetings. We do due diligence to our budget. It's not just a one-shot deal. We spend hours.
Well, that's my question. That's my question.
Hours and hours.
They should take hours.
And we have subcommittees as well.
Good. Okay. Any other counsel, counsel embody?
Just quickly, Mrs. Craig, do you know how many retirees you, how many retirees are you going to have? And what can, what, what are they teaching?
We have, I think that was in the presentation, I believe it's four retirees, and our teacher at the high school, two elementary teachers, and a special ed resource teacher.
Okay. And how many non-renewals? The projected non-renewals?
Excuse me?
Projected non-renewals.
The projected non-renewals are about eight.
Okay. All right. And last question, when you refer to the war college, and, you know, I know it's hard to predict because they don't give you the data on who's coming in, and what families they are, I mean, how many? Is it possible? Because I'm sure they know well in advance, how many students have got coming in, where they're coming from, and, you know, they better accommodate housing and the like.
Sure.
Is there any way of finding out that data from them ahead of time?
Well, we-
So you're not, it's not a question?
Well, we have a good relationship with them. Our assistant superintendent and our English language learning teachers, and our nurse, nurses go over, and we do a presentation when the families come in. So they, they project, when you look at trends, we go by the trends, but they can't really pinpoint an exact number until they actually arrive, because some arrive with, if they have five children, maybe only four come over, maybe one stays home because of where they are in schooling. So we do have, as I said, a good relationship with them, and they try to give us as much upfront information as possible.
Thank you. And sometimes they don't get housing, so they're not sure which district they're going to live in. That's another issue. So they may be in our neighboring communities. Depends on housing, whether they live on base, or whether they live, and they're renting. You know, a lot of families are coming to Newport County, they just don't have, they have orders, but they don't have a defined household yet.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Well, I have, I have another follow-up question. I asked you to provide me, with, the council, with the list of bonuses that were given out over the past several years.
Mm-hmm.
And frankly, I'll tell you, I was shocked, shocked at the amount, the total amount. I added it up, and unless I'm wrong, comes to close to $250,000 in bonuses were given out in the last six years. And what even bothers me more than that, up until I think last year, when it was brought to your attention, most of these were given out in executive session, and not ever reported after an open session.
There's two-
And we, we, no, I'm going to finish. You'll have your opportunity.
I thought you were finished, I'm sorry.
Okay?
And, and respect.
All right?
Respect.
And it bothers me when your MO over the years has been, social media, let's scare our teachers, social media, let's scare our students, social media, we're not going to have any more chorus, we're not, we're going to do it with our sports programs. But over the years, and I have a slide I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to put up, Mr. Brown? Okay? That I put, that I have, I want everybody to see. And that's from 2009 to 2019. But I just want, I just want to continue with these bonuses. Yet through social media, you have children coming in here that have, that have been emotionally drained, some of them, the thought that they're going to lose their sports programs, they're going to lose their chorus programs, but yet, we have a school district who's not performing, we have a school district whose population, school student population is going down, and we hand out close to $250,000 worth of bonuses selectively? We have school teachers that I talk to, that I talk to, that tell me how much they spend out of their own pocket bringing supplies into school. But I, I see just a select group of individuals that got bonuses, but $250,000 as you drag us through the mud and rake us over the coals every year with your social media propaganda?
Excuse me?
No.
Let's have some respect, because that's not appropriate to be demeaning like that.
It is, it is appropriate.
It's demeaning, and I don't think that we are equal to-
You are out of line even calling me to order, okay?
I'm sorry?
I'm just telling you, it bothers me that this much money was handed out for performance, for, for performance. Now, I know the vice president wants to follow up on something on that, too. I'm going to give him the opportunity.
Thank you. Yeah, thank, well, thank you for providing all these answers. What bothers me, I guess, is, you know, along the lines of Bob, is that, these are the facts. I mean, this isn't made up, these aren't made up numbers, these are things you voted upon, and these are things that have happened. And every year, you come in and say, we need 4%, and we need this. And, you know, one year, I think it was 2012 or 2013, we needed additional $300,000 to be op, to operate on what we need for our children. And you got it. Additional on top of, of what was given budget-wise, right? Remember that, right? So-
Last year, too?
You won't let us forget that.
Yeah, so when I see, when I saw those numbers, I'm like, are you kidding me? You say it's about the kids, I'm not sure that's the case, and I'm not looking to offend anybody or hurt anybody's feelings. When 80% or close to 80% of your budget is salary, and I get some of it, most of it, I understand why, but then to come in and say, we need this for operating, but then there's bonuses given out, that much? I don't understand that at all. I, I just do not understand, to me, it tells me you have money to spend, because you're giving out bonuses when you don't have that money to give out, supposedly. I just, like Bob said, you're cutting classes, you're cutting sports, you're losing state funding, but you're giving out bonuses. Someone needs to help me understand that. I do not understand that.
Counsel Von Villes?
Yeah, I want to add something related to that as well. I asked a question about an hour ago from the finance department, because I was very curious, I was very interested in the bonuses as well. And I was looking at the contracts, and there were, I wanted to know if there were zero increases in the contracts, and there actually were. I have, I have all of three contracts that are related to the school department. And in fiscal year 13, there was a zero increase, and yet, if I go down the bonuses, what I see is 3,800, 4,500, 4,000, 4,000, and going diminishing because there are people who earn less money. And then it was even more, I think, incongruent with what we would expect, when in FY16, there was also a series of zero increases, and I'm looking at bonuses that are 8,000, 8,000, 8,000, 5,000, and then again diminishing. So I have a problem with that. When the teachers are getting zero, okay, it would seem to me that excessive bonuses like that are, I, I would hide it. I mean, I certainly wouldn't let anybody know that, because it sure as heck, if I were a teacher, would make me pretty mad. Thank you. Can I-
Any follow-up comments? You'll have the chance. Any follow-up comments?
I'm good for now.
Okay. Teresa?
So let me explain a little bit, so you have a clear understanding. So during this time period when teachers were getting raises, the administration was getting zero raises, 0% increase, zero steps, zero stipends. So those were all zeros. So they got performance bonuses instead, which were less than giving a raise. So if you did the calculations of whatever the teachers were getting at the time, it would have been less, it would have been more money than by giving them a performance bonus. And the other part of that is, the, some of the bonuses, the way it works, were given in that following year for the prior year. So when you're talking about a particular year, then that bonus is, was retro to the prior year. Some of these bonuses were already pre-budgeted prior to them actually happening, based on the timing of our, of the contracts. The other aspect is, is that, this is personnel, and personnel is, is done in executive sess, executive session, no different than the municipality, of their bonuses, their raises, significant raises, and I'm not going to hash back and forth, but that's all public knowledge, too. So I know those numbers as well, and they're substantial and significant on the municipality side. But when you're dealing with administration who's not getting a percentage of any kind of increase, and then also, as the stipends, the technology, things like that, that Linda does on both sides, wearing two hats, those, those stipends are part of, the, the bonus is part of her stipend for her technology. So when they got 0% increases for multiple years, they got a bonus. That's how that worked. Otherwise, when everybody else was getting increases, including the town at 2, 2.5%, and some of their contracts of 2, 2.2, we were at 0, 1, and 1 on our side, or 0, 1/2, and 1.5, and, you know, there was, there was times when that happened. So I just want to make that very clear, too, that when you're looking at these bonuses, they're not astronomical when you're looking at the relative picture. You're looking over a six-year period, go back and look at the increases of administration, of percentage increase, and there was none. So there are other years that there were no bonuses, zero bonuses, or a $2,000 bonus, and then other years, yes, there was a $8,000, Barbara, you're absolutely correct. But, you know, when you're looking at the, based on where we're at, is where things and how, and how we did it. And also, again, they were retroactive to the year before, because that's before the budget closed.
Quick question. So for the, you referred to it as the central administration, the school-based administration, this is a segment of the people, and the support staff clerical. None of those people got pay increases during, from 20, from FY13 to FY18?
They did not.
That's correct.
Okay.
None of them got any, any pay increases?
None of them-
Then no, none of them got any stipends, no one got any pay increases, no one got nothing?
No, so that's, that's another thing I just wanted to point out, is that in, in the teacher's contract, if they have a master's degree, they get a stipend for that, if they have, what else? Maybe that's the main one. Years of experience, longevity, they get an increase in their, in their base for that. None of those things currently, or had existed in any of these years, in, in any of these folks' contracts.
Okay. Counsel Von Villes?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at this, and I'm not picking on anybody in particular, so I'm not going to name, you know, who people are specifically, but I'm looking at a central administration. I'm looking from, from FY2013, okay? A bonus of $3,800 for another person, a bonus of $4,500 for whatever, two 4,000 ones. In 2014, I see a $7,000 bonus, two $4,500 bonuses and a 4,000. In FY15, I see three $6,000 bonuses. In FY17, I see three $8,000 bonuses. Come on, this is not appropriate. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a school person, you know that, okay? That's not appropriate.
Counsel embody?
So, just to be clear, and I just said this to Counsel Von Villes, you're citing stipends just now that you give to teachers for, that's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about teachers.
Understand.
All right, that's one thing. The other thing is, when you talk about the town side, Teresa, the town side over the last few years, aside from employee contracts, which, you know, we try to follow a hard line to a certain degree on what the raises are going to be, and we try to make it equal for every department, for the most part, but when you, when you talk about what our budget looks like on the town side, our town departments, for the most part, have had minimal increases, some zero, some have been level funded, and last year, we took money from the town side to give the school department what we gave them. That's where that came from. No tax increases. We didn't want to increase taxes. And we still don't want to increase taxes, but we don't have to, we're minimal if we have to. But the fact of the matter is, is that we've taken it from the town side to help out on your side. You didn't get what you wanted, and I know that. I, I hear you, but that's where that money came from. We took it from another town department to help the school department out last year. You still make cuts, and I get it, and you, you told us you were going to do it, that's fair, I'm not going to complain about that. But that's what we did, and that's what we've done in the past. So to equate what we do on the town side to what's happening on the school side, when you look over a six-year period of almost $250,000 in bonuses, that's, that does make you question a little bit.
Teresa, Deanna, quick question for you, or Kelly, quick question for you. The, the teachers' contracts, are the principals and assistant principals covered under the teachers' contracts?
No.
None of those are?
The, the central administration, the school-based administration, and the support staff clerical listed here all have individual contracts, they're not, not-
They have individual contracts.
Not bargaining unit.
So what you just said to me, since FY2013, there have been no across-the-board, this is the statement, I want, just so I can put it in my head tonight, there's been no across-the-board salary increases for anyone in central administration, that their base salary has stayed the same?
Most of them.
Since 2013?
Yeah. To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Vice President?
But can I?
So I was going to- Yeah, go ahead, go, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to respond to Rick one thing. The only point I was trying to make about the teacher's stipends is that they receive a stipend for having a master's degree or something else, and those aren't part of the administrator's contracts, but many of them-
What's, what we're talking about?
I understand, but many of them also have a master's degree, they're just-
They earned it. It's part of the contract, part of the, well, whatever it is. They earned with it, yeah. I mean, I'm not saying they didn't-
I understand. All I'm saying is that, that the administrators don't get an additional stipend for having that, so part of that is, is rolled into the bonus. And I do want to also point out that if you go across the line, some of the lines, they, they go up some years, and they have gone down in years, and that's reflected based on money that is available or not available, and it's not built into the base salary. So one year to the next, we felt that it was more appropriate to do it as a performance bonus than as a salary increase.
I think, I think the point that my colleagues are trying to make, are that it's money you're, it's money you could be using better elsewhere. It's money that you need. I, I'm not trying to knock the administrators. I know how hard they work. I also know how hard the teachers work, but the fact of the matter is, we're, we're fighting for every dollar. And if you can use that money, 250, almost $50,000 over however many years, maybe it's better spent somewhere else at some point. I'm not saying people don't deserve, I'm not saying people don't deserve raises. I'm not saying people don't deserve to be recognized, but, but it's just, it's the battle every year, and then when you see that number, it kind of sticks out a little bit.
Vice President?
So I just want to make sure we're clear, I know Bob's asked a couple of times, so none of you have received a raise from 2013 to 2017?
That's correct. Do you not believe us to ask the same questions seven times? I promise you that is correct.
Teresa, don't get smart with me, because I'm in no mood to be smart and listen to your mouth tonight. I'm telling you right now.
Stop.
No, but you stop, because I've had about enough of you.
We've answered the question.
I asked the question because I wanted to be clear, don't be wise about it.
Excuse me?
Excuse yourself and your behavior. I'm not bullying you.
All right. Knock it off.
Everybody's bullying you, and when somebody challenges you, it's a bully.
The reality is, they have not, they have not gotten a raise.
I asked a simple question.
All right, let's move on.
And the answer is no.
No, I'm not done asking the question.
The answer is no, they have not gotten a raise. And the other thing that's really important is-
The vice president has the floor, okay? Right now, he has the floor. You'll get the chance to respond. You said the same thing like four times in a row. Go ahead.
So I looked at it like, you know, when you look at it and you see bonuses, right? Not knowing, you don't receive a raise, okay? Because that's news to probably all of us, but you're upset. So, and I'm sure you can, if you, put the shoe on the other foot, because if you were sitting here and you saw the same thing, not in having that information, you're going to say, you come in here and you're looking for this, and you see bonuses. I, I'm sure you can see that, right? And understand that.
Well, and, and every year when we've had these-
Well, and, and every year when we've had these-
Is that a yes or a no?
It's, no.
You can't, okay.
I'm sorry. Because I'm trying to explain that each year that we have sat here, we've explained that administration has not had raises in years. So we have given you that information every single year. So when you look at these performance bonuses, they are based on performance evaluations, based, performance evaluations, they are based on longevity, and they are based on the, um, class, essentially like the classes and the stipends are for the teachers. So what happened was, I just, can I just finish my sentence, please?
Counsel Flynn.
So they, the, the administration used to be under the same teacher contracts deals, if they would get the percentage increase, the stipends, the longevity, all of that used to be under the contract. Since I've been on for 17 years, we took that out of the contract, we took that out of their contracts to not be the same as teachers, because of the financial crises that everybody was going through. So we changed that, several, many years ago, we changed that, and then had in each individual contract, taking that percentage increase out of, you know, to not match the teacher's contract. So when we did that, and the, and dollars got tight, we didn't do the percentage increase, so they took zeros, and we did the performance bonuses in lieu of a percentage increase. So again, I know you're looking at that particular number right now, over a period of time, but the reality is, they've had zero percent increase in their salary base. So they, if, and also, if you look at the base salaries across the state of Rhode Island, we are not in the top for any of our administrative positions. And, so when you look at comparability and the longevity of our administration staff, their salary should be thousands of dollars more, based on their long, their longevity and their experience in the, in the state of Rhode Island, of other, in other districts. So, if you look at that district, you know, by district, of all the different positions, and we presented that information at some point, I can't remember what year it was, but we did give that information out one year, not long ago, so that you could see all the different, 36 districts in the state, of where a super is, an assistant super, facilities and, and, um, financial.
Hang, hang on.
We've still got this. Okay. We've got to move along.
So, when I look at some of these numbers, I'd like to see the percentage increase, because from 2013 to 2017, some people got a $34,000, $300, $34,300 bonus, some got a $29,000 bonus, and so on and so on, and some got a $28,000. So you mean to tell me, you said earlier, it was cheaper to give a bonus than it would give a percentage increase? If I start doing some of the numbers, it seems like we're doing 4% and 5% increases here.
So, so the bonuses are not compounded, so the base salary stayed the same, one year they would, somebody got a $7,000, the next year they got $6,000.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying that bonus number is based off of a percentage of what? Performance. And the other, the other thing I'd like to say, you say performance, right? When I look at a slide like that, I don't think anybody should get a bonus. If it's a performance bonus. If they're going downhill, that's not performance. If they were going uphill, I'd probably shut my big mouth.
Our test scores, our test, testing tools have changed. So we went from, uh, PARC, we went to, um, KNECAP, and then we went, now we're at SATs. So over the course of, of the past seven years, our testing, our testing tools have changed. And it's, and it's across the board, that every district has fluctuated, because when a testing tool changes, all of the PD has to be kicked back in again, to teach to the new tools. So, and you're not supposed to teach to the test.
Counsel Flynn?
Well, I, I just have a, a couple of comments, um, being pretty new at this, and this is an extraordinary amount of information, these budgets, um, but, it's, it's not uncommon practice in corporate America, to do a combination of raises and bonuses, or bonuses, uh, because the, the pots of money for raises are, is limited. You have so much, you can dole out so much to each employee, and sometimes to keep that talent, you've got to give them that little extra, to keep them there, you know, for that next year. It, so it's not totally uncommon, um, I, I'm just wondering if the council would prefer to, and I can't believe that you guys took zero for five years.
I think it's seven.
Very unusual, or, that's very unusual, that, that's hard to, to swallow. So would the council prefer to see that half, one, two percent raise? And from an accounting standpoint, my question is, you know, one benefit of the bonuses, because I think when you give raises, that becomes the new base, and then you're tied to that every single year. So a bonus allows you to, to flex a little bit, you know, and I just offer these as comments, observations, um, and I, I just wanted to say, having attended some of the budget hearings, Council of Toronto went to others, but the overriding message, we didn't get line by line, we got summaries of their assessments of line by line, but it seemed to me the 4% was pretty much taken up with contractual and state mandates. It's very concerning across the board, and I don't have a solution for that, but I'm very unhappy about that also, I know you guys are as well, whether it's the testing methodology, or the profile of our community, that has got to change. So, you know, I, I would rather, you know, not get stuck in the weeds, but improve that bottom line for our kids.
Thank you. Counsel of Toronto?
Councilwoman Flynn, were you reading my notes?
Yes, that's what these high technologies are all about.
I, I have to say too, that chart is something I've drawn many times myself, you know, in business. If you had a chart like that in a business, you'd be out of business, okay? The, the advantage that you have is you can mandate taxes, right? You mandate taxes. Because if you were going in, and, because you've changed your testing three different times, it's not the town, the middle towns issue. It's the state's issue. Right? So, I'm saying, get with your local state representatives and do it about face, and go, you talk to the state and the union. Because that chart's got to change. Because, if that was a business, we'd be out of business. Your service level looks like, and that's, again, looks like, and what it looks like and what people think it is, is as important as maybe, it's, might not even be that they don't understand that it's changed three times, but I can have people coming to me saying, why are you guys even considering giving them any money, when the performance levels are going down? That's the question I get a lot. Okay? I'm just saying. And, when you look and you see what the average student, you know, is up from 13,500 to 18,000, substitute salaries from 90 to 300,000, total budget, 35 million to 43 million, the real issue is, those are still going to be going up, and I'm not sure how you guys are going to turn around those red arrows. So, I guess that's kind of what I want to hear about, is how are you going to improve the kids' education, so when they come out, they're ready for college? And I don't know if you can do it, by just coming up here and asking us for more money.
Counsel of Onvillas?
Yeah, I want to talk about the test scores. My experience, because of, I'm in the business, I went to Massachusetts in 1993, okay, that's where I worked, 93 to 99, okay? 93 to, no, 95, um, no, to 99. Um, but anyway, the point was, right after they passed the Ed Reform Act, I remember what happened in Massachusetts, and why it worked in Massachusetts, because they didn't teach to the test. The test came after the development of the curriculum, which identified what they wanted kids to know. They did that at the state level, and then they sent it down to the individual districts, the districts developed their curriculum, and then the, the MCAS test was developed from that. The problem is, we are looking at tests, and we're trying to teach to tests, and every time we change the curriculum, we teach to the test, and we're not going to make any difference there. I teach at the college level, and I will tell you, my kids can't read, my kids can't write, they have difficulty because they haven't learned in the public school system, okay? And it has to do with the way that we teach them to the test, not to what they should be learning, and how they should be learning, and how that they can get better at it.
Thank you. Okay, Vice President?
I would just like to say that, thank you for clearing up, uh, some of my, um, issues, although I still take some issue with it, as far as the numbers and the, and the amount of dollars. So, you know, I thought about it over the weekend when these answers were coming in, and, I thought about, okay, this, this is being treated like, like a corporation, where if you have a sale, a good sales year or two, you can afford to do those things, but that's not, that's not what this is. So, I get it that you took zeros, thank you, but you really didn't. You can call it a zero, but it's not a zero. So, when I look at it, and I've always been a, a proponent of the schools, and the past couple of years, uh, it's been a little bit different for me. Because, it's the same song and dance, it's the same story, I get that you can't raise taxes, um, I get that you can't raise revenues, I, I get that. I get that things go up, I get that we need to, um, there's contractual obligations, I get that. What I don't get, and I'm not a proponent of anymore, is, keep throwing money at it, that'll fix it. It's not fixing it. Look at the, look at from 2009, 35 million up to 43 million, it's not fixing it. Throwing money is not fixing it. And I'm not, I'm using the word throwing, right? Maybe it should be a different word. But, I don't think we should throw any money at it. It's not working. It's not working.
There are other variables you need to take into consideration.
Okay.
So, it's not just throwing money, there are other variables, the loss of revenue, and the state changing costs with all the testing. Where we have to go back, we have to look at the curriculum, we need to realign the curriculum, we need to provide interventions for those students who are not meeting standard. So what Massachusetts did well is they stuck with the plan. They also funded the plan, as a state. Rhode Island has not stuck with the plan.
Let me, let me just end tonight by saying, we, we're going to have further conversations, but we have some, we have some housekeeping stuff we have to do before the meeting starts at 7 o'clock. But, thank you for answering these questions, okay? I think, um-
Can I have one more thing? There is a second.
Go ahead, Counsel of Onvillas.
Um, one additional thing that I want to bring up tonight, because I'm the person that asked for the, um, the high schools, uh, by sections, okay? And one of the things that I have looked at, now you've got to understand that I, I personally scheduled a 1,500 kid high school in Rhode Island, a 200 high school in Massachusetts, and a 400 regional, 7 through 12, in Connecticut, okay? So I have great experience as far as scheduling. I took a look at the scheduling here, all right? And I remember when, I guess the question I want to ask is, or I, I'm getting, going to make an assumption, and you tell me if I'm wrong, that probably within your contract, the maximum number of, of students that you can have in a class is 25, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, so I take a look at this, all right? And what, and what I see is, I remember how thick, mind you, now, you're dealing with 600 students at the high school. I remember when there were, there were 1,250 kids at the high school, and there was one AP class in each of the areas, and 14 was the cutoff number. And I take a look at what you've got here, and you've got, you've got, just going down the list, all right? First of all, you have classes that are not anywhere near 25, all right? You have, and, um, you have honors classes with 35 kids, when you have, in the 10th grade, I'm looking at the numbers of kids, because if I look at the advisory, I can pretty much tell how many kids are in each grade, okay? So I take a look at the advisory, and I see that there's 165 kids roughly, that's not including obviously the special ed kids, they come at the bottom, but 165 kids in the 9th grade, okay? And, and what we have here, all right, is, um, is two honors classes of, with a total of 47 kids, in the, of the, of the 165 in the 9th grade, that are in honors classes. So I'm asking myself, what's happening with this? If you have 600 kids in a class, and you have somewhere around 50 kids in honors classes, something's wrong somewhere. When you have AP physics, you have 28 kids in AP physics, now that's a senior-level class, okay? And I can tell you that with 1,250 kids in a class, 14 was the maximum in AP physics. I'm looking at AP US history, 40 kids, how to get 40 kids in AP US history? I just don't understand, when you have 138 kids in, in the 11th grade. So, I'm looking at these numbers, okay? And I'm looking at classes with, with, um, um, gosh, it's un, it's unbelievable to me sometimes, 14, 16, 19, 18, 15, it's ridiculous. Um, 15, 15, 17, 14. I'm not looking at the little ones, I know that the little ones are sometimes combined, classes are sometimes combined. Um, 19, 21, 21, 17, 20, they're nowhere near 20. The class, I remember a class, and I remember because my own son was placed in it, I had a 34 kid class in, in 1962, all right? God knows, it's a long time back, and you certainly wouldn't want 34 kids in a class right now. But I can tell you, 25 kids is where you should be at. And if you don't have 25 kids in each of those regular classes, and you have so many kids that are in the honors classes, something is wrong with, with the way that they're being placed in classes, and maybe, there are too many teachers.
Mrs. Vaughn, did you say 1962?
I did.
Dennis and I weren't even born.
Oh, that's the one. All right. All right.
I had nothing to do with that.
It was, it was a-
I, I just would like to comment on the class situation, you had said there were about 1,250 students, I, I'm a little confused of that number, that you were saying 1,200-
1,250 kids when I left in 1989.
Oh. Okay, because when I graduated, we, we, there was less than that, we had 1,000 kids in the high school in 84, so I guess maybe it increased after that, but we only had 1,000 kids in the class.
Okay, well, I remember, that was the year.
Yeah, 1,000 kids in the school, it was 200 to 250 students per class, and I graduated in 84. And I know we didn't have 1,250, because the school wasn't as big as it is today, for the labs, but, um, but I do, but in regards to some of these classes, and, I, I just want to clarify that, when you're talking AP students, and if you have 120 juniors, and 40 some of them are in AP, an AP class, that's, that's good. I mean, what we're doing is, you, you, we're not, first of all, we're not teaching to the test, we're teaching for students to be successful in career and college readiness. If you came to the awards night, on scholarship nights, and sat there and listened over the many years that I've sat on that stage for the past 16, and saw how many students are walking across that stage with scholarships, full-blown scholarships, going to the military academy on a, a full ride, and all kinds of other great colleges in, across the United States of America, and international, that our students are graduating with high honors and incredible success. We don't teach the test, we are successful, we are, we are a very hard-working district, we do due diligence to our budget, and our students are successful. And are some of the classes smaller, there's rationale for that, and I want to just make sure I'm clear on this. Military move out in November-
Theresa, I've got to give you one minute.
Okay. Thank you. And military move out in March. So class sizes change throughout the school year. It is not what you get in the October enrollment, because in October enrollment, changes again at Thanksgiving, and changes again in March, and guess what, it's changing now. There are at least, at least, 50 to 75 people moving out of this community in the next two weeks, with military families. So our rotation changes. And then in July, we have a whole new class, so we have three sets of families that come through our community, and we don't always know who's coming and going, and when they're going. But our program, our, our college, I mean, our high school has done a lot, and we now have these career pathways that are growing leaps and bounds, and we've been accredited, and if you look at our inspections, and the accreditation process that the high school has gone through, we have become very, very highly noticed and recommended. So these test scores, I'm not exactly sure where they came from, and I'm not understanding where you got that number from, I really don't, and I would love to understand where you're com, where that's coming from.
Okay.
Because that is not accurate to me.
Okay, I've got to cut you off, I'm cutting you off.
Okay, but that's not accurate to me, so showing this to the public is a big concern, because-
Those are actual results, they're not figments of anybody's imagination.
Where'd the numbers come from?
Actual results, right?
They're the actual results. They're the actuals.
Which is, by the way, the website, this came from the website, because I printed it off myself, came from the website that was given to us in our response to our question.
Yeah, you gave it to us. You gave us those numbers.
I just haven't seen that chart like that.
No, I'm just telling you, whoa, 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 you're done.
Our budget of 43 million includes the bond.
You're done.
Includes the bond.
Okay? Okay, just in closing, my only comment is, and I do this, and I've said this to everybody before, I compare us to our neighbor to the north. They do a lot more with millions less, they educate a lot more kids, and they have better academic results. Why can't we do that? That's my only question. Vice President.
Motion to recess till seven.
Second.
Yeah, motion second, recess to seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I'm sure there'll be more questions.
Why'd you cut it short?
Okay? Okay, pursuant to Rule 25 of the rules of the council, citizens may address the town on one subject only. Said subject is substantive town business, neither discussed during the regular meeting nor related to... You shut that door back there. Nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes, and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during this session will not be voted upon. Do we have any forms?
No.
Okay, we have none. Okay. Town council, town business update. Item number three, communication of Councilor Toronto. Update on all active projects and status report that the town administrator presented to the town council.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown or Councilor Toronto?
I'll, I'll just quickly go through the, the updates that I have. I need to provide a more thorough update, maybe at the next meeting. I, I just, it's been busy with the budget and other projects. So, I'll, I'll just run through the ones I have, and, and I'll provide another update in the future. The first update regarding red roads, uh, phase one. So, these were the roads that we started two years ago. Uh, the one road that remains outstanding on that list is High Street. I think everybody notices towards, uh, as you get towards Paul Avenue, the road has had some subsequent construction where we had to, uh, replace some material in a trench that had originally been dug out in 2000. That trench was repaired. However, over the winter, we did notice there was some settlement near Paul Avenue, and then some alligator cracks down towards the north end by the supermarket. So, uh, we'll, um, do some remediation in those two areas, and where originally, we had reported finishing that, uh, uh, final paving in that area in the spring, we're actually gonna push that out in the fall. We just want to make sure that once we're done with High Street, that, um, the issues that, that came about from construction in 2000 are resolved, and that road will last for a considerable period of time, the way that we had originally intended. So, uh, that's the roads for phase one. For red roads, phase two, uh, the contractor is actually mobilizing this week. Uh, they are in the process, and they're gonna start on CogSchul, CogSchul Ave, of, uh, raising the structures, and they'll start to, uh, do the final paving. Of the roads that we have in phase two, there are no issues to report, so that, that phase of the project should go pretty quickly. Um, overall, between the two projects, we, I think we have about $300,000 to $400,000 left over. Uh, the Public Works Department right now is looking at, um, identifying what roads were categorized as red on the list, and, uh, what we'll do is present those to the council before we, uh, execute any agreements to do any further work. But overall, uh, from the November 18 bond, we're, we're in relatively great shape, um, having accomplished what we set out to, uh, do. Uh, number three, on the school buildings, uh, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. Uh, the school department, um, has spent about 3.5 out of the $10 million bond. Uh, they have a considerable amount of work that's scheduled for this upcoming, uh, construction season. Um, so overall, I think, I have it yellow as the schedule. I think the expectation is they would be a little bit further along. The other issue that we had talked about is that, uh, we talked about the windows at the last meeting, um, that they would be more expensive than originally planned, so we have some resourcing issues that would, uh, get picked up. But, um, overall, the project is moving forward, and, um, uh, and I'm, we'll get some more updates, I think, directly on the school department from that. Uh, number four is the multipurpose fields at the recreation, uh, complex, uh, the former drive-in property. Uh, Warren Hall, um, has completed the engineering and design work. Um, right now on the property, it's designed to fit one regulation lacrosse field and one practice field. Uh, we have, the plan itself was being looked at by some representatives from the lacrosse community, uh, just to make sure it fit what needs they thought they might see. Uh, I am hoping that either at one of the upcoming one or two meetings, I will bring that plan forward to the council for a final sign-off. Uh, we're waiting on some pricing, um, mostly related to looking at the option of lighting on the property. Uh, so, so we're, we're in pretty good shape with that. Uh, we had a little bit of delay. Uh, the committee wanted us to make sure we tied in the project to the Gaudet property so that it was logical. Um, so that was one of the issues that Warren looked at. Uh, the second issue is just trying to fit everything on the property, uh, whereas the wetlands have grown some. So, uh, that took a little bit of finessing on, on Warren's part, so... Uh, bottom line, we should bring in, be bringing that forward, and, uh, I think it incorporates the comments from the committee, um, that they had, they had given us from the original design. Uh, slip lining at Upper Easton's Point, it's about 95% complete. Um, there are some sta, uh, straggler laterals and manholes that we have left, and then we should just be addressing the punch list items. Um, just as a side note, we have seen considerable reductions in flow at Wave Avenue, so I think this has made a considerable, uh, impact in our ability to manage the collection of wastewater in the community. Uh, so that's, that's worked out well. I do, there have been a handful of issues where laterals that we slip line have failed, um, has caused, uh, some issues with homeowners, we hear about those, but, um, there, there's well over 400 connections that were, uh, slip lined out in the neighborhood. So, when we look at having a hand, handful of, of issues, it's, it's by far less than having dug, um, every one of those yards up. So, um, my apologies to those people that were negatively impacted, but overall, I think, uh, this has been the, the most successful we've, success we've had in, uh, lining, uh, laterals. Uh, the next item, the, the Ripec report related to the, uh, recommendations from the tax exploration committee. Uh, tentatively, I have a meeting either Wednesday or Friday with Ripec. Um, we're gonna review, uh, the, a model that was completed, the final model, uh, was completed last week. It's been sent to Ripec. Uh, we are finalizing the documentation regarding the model, and Ripec is finalizing the report. So, when we meet this week, uh, we should be finalizing the report and being able to schedule time for John Simmons and his staff to come sit with the council, uh, review the report, and, uh, discuss, um, their findings and, and, um, with you. Uh, so we are bringing that matter to a close, and just again, I just want to, um, just make sure everyone understands that the modeling is, is what the issue is, is, this has been difficult. Uh, we've essentially built at this point seven different models, um, all of which require us to restate the, uh, the town's tax rolls going back to roughly 2005. So, um, it's a considerable amount of work, and it's just taken us, uh, a little more time to, to, than, than we originally estimated. However, um, it's a good work product, and I think it's one that you can solidly base any decisions that you make, um, on. So, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's, 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 it's impressive. It's, I, I think you'll be, be happy with it. Uh, streetlights, this is a project that Peter and I are actually working on. It started in Public Works, it's now moved over to more of a, an issue with the Solicitor's Office. Um, a number of months ago, the state, um, was in a dispute with, uh, this town of Johnston, and in the end, there was an agreement made between, uh, Johnston and, and the DOT that Johnston would take over responsibility for the lights that are on state roads. Uh, since that time, uh, we've been notified that, uh, DOT is, uh, willing to take the rest of the lights in the state, so long as they've been converted to an LED unit, and that they are not under a maintenance agreement. Uh, so we're, we're, we're gonna do some work to figure out the benefit of doing that. Uh, Peter's office is also looking at whether or not there's some other clarification legally we need to make before we continue on with this project. Uh, we do continue to work with five other communities on the RFP. Uh, so, I, I think there's a little bit of legal work that, that remains open, and probably some more work with the state that will sort of come to a conclusion at the end of this legislative session. Uh, but there is some potential savings there. The worst case is, I see that, something where we save $50,000 to $60,000 a year staying with National Grid and converting to LEDs. And if we were to, uh, purchase the lights and take over ourselves, there's a, a greater savings that may be able to be realized. Uh, so, uh, everybody's working on that, and I, I think we'll, we'll come to a conclusion here shortly. This is, uh, the next one is, uh, small cell sighting ordinance. Uh, this is the cellphone, mini cellphone towers that are associated with 5G, um, uh, data network that we'll start seeing going up. The Solicitor's Office has completed a draft of that ordinance.
And actually, we've completed the final version, actually, we'll be getting that to Wendy.
Yep, so that will be coming forward. Uh, now, it's been an effort between Peter's office, the planner, uh, and Public Works. So, uh, that will be coming forward. The gravel processing ordinance, uh, with the exception of Mellow Construction, all of the material operators are following the new ordinance. Uh, we've looked at the setbacks as well as the heights. Uh, Mellow Construction has submitted a plan, uh, to my office, uh, to come into compliance with the ordinance, and, uh, we have an upcoming meeting with Mellow Construction to discuss, uh, the plan itself, as well as, um, how or the process that we would follow in order for, um, that plan to be enforceable, so that, uh, it's not something that I approve, but it's something I think ultimately that the council, uh, would need to weigh in on. So, that, that should be coming up here shortly. Uh, lastly, a project that Mrs. Santos has been working on with the Tax Assessor's Office. Um, they are making improvements at the counter, um, within the office. It's a, it's an accessibility, security, um, as well as a, an operational employee wellness initiative. It really covers a, a number of different things. Uh, the school department is helping us with that. They're doing the work. Uh, those renovations are scheduled to be completed prior to June 10th. Uh, the, the school department's presently building some cabinets that will be coming in, uh, but the, uh, project has been going along well. It's not disruptive to the current operations, and the staff are excited about, uh, getting some better work conditions. So, those are the updates I have for tonight. I know there, that, well, I do, that, and you know, there's, there's a number of other projects going on. Um, I just need some time. With spring starting and all of the, the construction sort of coming up, it's just been, uh, a little difficult to keep track of everything. So, I'll get an updated schedule, uh, at the next meeting, that I think will cover more of what's going on.
Would it be fair to, um, to say tonight that we can schedule that Ripec update for our May 20th meeting?
If, if I could, Mr. President, just, uh, I can email you before the end of the week, once I, once I set with John.
I'd like to get that to the council as soon as we could.
Yes, so by week's end, I will notify you and the clerk, or, or the whole council.
Good.
Um, and get that scheduled.
Thank you. Councilor Toronto?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Sean, thank you for the update. The one I didn't see on here that I just wanted to maybe get an update on is the senior exemptions. We know we approved that, um, to move forward, the changes. Then we talked about rolling it out to the community. What, what are we doing to roll that out? Are we advertising that in the paper? Or what's our approach to get the word out to the seniors that they should reapply if they've applied and other people do qualify that may not have applied?
Um, I'll get all of the details to you. Um, I know specifically, the one part I have been involved in is the assessor has mailed letters to every senior that participates in the program. So, if, if you are a senior citizen, you participate in the program, you receive a notice, um, that addresses the changes and, uh, provides you information, um, regarding, uh, whether, or advising you whether or not you need to, uh, re, resubmit your income numbers to get a, a better benefit.
Right.
So, uh, so I think everybody individually who's in the program has been contacted.
Okay.
Um, the broader advertisement, I, I'll come back and advise you on that.
I think it would be, if, I would think it'd be good if we advertised it in the paper, just so people are aware that we passed this, these changes, and that they should apply for these changes. So, I'd, I'd like to see if we can approve an ad in the paper.
Would that be a motion?
I can take care of that, that's...
Yeah, that, we can do that without a motion.
Yeah, it will be taken care of.
That's a good idea. Councilor Lombardi?
Okay, thank you.
Really, really quick, I see our, uh, our rep, our Newport Daily News person sitting out there, and maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to do a, uh, a story on the senior citizens' exemptions, and putting out there also, in addition to an ad, that they're out there and people should take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Santos.
Mr. Brown, you say that the tax assessor is mailing out notices to the seniors who are presently on the plan. Now, the, I receive a senior exemption, and I also receive my husband's veteran's exemption. Anyone who receives those at the present time, do they have to reapply?
No.
That has to be made clear, because it, it sounds as if, that everyone who has these exemptions has to reapply. That's the interpretation that I get, that sounds like you have to reapply even though you're getting, you're presently getting them.
Okay. We can, we can make sure that's clarified.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to read that. And, Mr. President?
Councilor Santos.
May I sometime talk with Mr., with our solicitor regarding the gravel? I'd like to...
You can talk with me anytime you'd like.
I can. Thank you. All right.
Councilor Santos, if he doesn't comply with your request, you let us know.
She will.
But I'm sure he will. Okay, thank you. All right, and thank you, uh, Councilor Toronto, for putting this on the docket, and, um...
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your follow-up.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much. Okay, these are the nice things. Continued from April 15th, 2019, regular meeting. At the request of Councilor Lombardi, a citation of the council for Rudy Everin, Middletown Youth Wrestling Club.
Motion to begin said presentation.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to begin. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, uh, Councilor Lombardi if he'd, uh, make the presentation tonight along with, uh, Councilor Toronto. For those of you that don't know it, uh, Councilor Toronto was a Middletown, uh, high wrestling champ, uh, state champ for two years. So, uh, I think it's appropriate to have, uh, our expertise, our former state champ down there with, uh, Councilor Lombardi. Use the other, uh, yeah, okay. If it works.
How's that? So, first of all, I'd like to have Rudy come on up with, uh, with his coach, Carl, come on up to him. And, uh, do we have family?
That's Rudy.
That's Rudy.
That's a wrestling champ.
Rudy? Don't you put your, put your medal, put your medal on, Rudy.
What?
We just saw what's happening there.
That's adorable. Holy, wow!
He looks, he looks nervous. He's a, he's a, he's a national champion, and he's nervous.
Gentlemen, why don't you stand off to the side, to the podium, of the podium, so the camera can get a good view on you. Rick, if you and, uh, Dennis could move to your left with Rudy? There you go.
Rudy, come on over this side. There you go, buddy.
There you go. Is that a little better, Nate?
So, it's not often that you are in the presence of a national champion of anything, um, and this is just a great thing. So, as, uh, the council president just said, that, uh, Dennis is a two-time state champion, and that's not an easy feat. And, uh, I was on the very first, I'm the very first Middletown graduate, Middletown High School wrestling, uh, on the first team with Coach, the late Coach Barry Clark. And the, uh, tradition of wrestling in this community, um, has been just something to, uh, to behold over the years. And of course, the youth program, that the USA program that, that Rudy's participating in was spawned when we realized, and many of, many wrestlers, including Coach Clark, realized that they needed a feeder program somewhere down the line, and you needed to bring these kids up into the sport. And I will tell you that wrestlers are a unique breed. They're not like any other athlete you're gonna find. I had a Navy commander say to me one day, when they were screening for Navy SEALs, he said, "If I had the choice between a wrestler and a football player, I'm taking the wrestler every day of the week." So anyway, what I want to do is, Rudy, I want to congratulate you for your accomplishment. Like I said, being a national champion, particularly in wrestling, is quite a feat.
I'm gonna read the citation.
It says, "Be it hereby known to all that the Middletown Town Council hereby recognizes and hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Rudy Everin in recognition of your accomplishments as a member of the Middletown Youth Wrestling Club, being the first Rhode Island wrestler, the first Rhode Island wrestler, to win the national championship for your age and weight group at the 2019 USA Wrestling Folk Style National Tournament in Iowa. The Town Council is extend their very best wishes in your future endeavors, given this 15th day of April 2019." And it's the wrong date, because we used to do it a couple of weeks ago. But Rudy, this is for you. Why don't you hold that up, so we can get a picture? And Rudy, we have one more thing for you. So I remember as a wrestler, and I'm sure Dennis does, that it was always someplace, you know, you didn't have someplace to put your wrestling shoes and all your gear when you go off to tournaments. So we've got you a bag. It's kind of waterproof, and there's a spot in the bottom to put your wrestling shoes. And you take that off to your tournaments with you. Try to get it as close to Middletown blue as we can. And I'm gonna tell you, you know, now that you're a champion, a national champion, you're gonna live up to those standards, my friend. So good luck to you in the future.
Speech.
Thank you, Rudy.
And I want to recognize their coaches. You know, nobody puts in more work than wrestling coaches. Again, I had the opportunity to coach for almost 20 years, between coaching at Rogers and Middletown and the middle schools. And, you know, it's a labor of love, because you never do it for the money, that's for sure. But to see these kids come up and be accomplished wrestlers, and be accomplished human beings, and learn respect and discipline and responsibility, that's what it's all about. And hopefully, we'll be seeing a lot more of Rudy to come. Coach?
And just to put everything into perspective, Rudy is a first grader, seven years old, at Aquinic Elementary School. And I think he's done more than I've done in my life. But we have, for USA Wrestling, which is the national governing body of the sport of wrestling, there's about 4,000 youth wrestling clubs. Middletown Youth Wrestling is one of those clubs. And almost 240,000 athletes. Of those athletes, about 2,500 of the top 1% go to Iowa to compete in the Nationals. And of those, Rudy is one of 10 bantam champions for his age. So when I tell you this is an accomplishment, he is the youngest member of the USA Wrestling National Team, which is the Olympic Team. So just put everything in perspective. He is, you have your Olympic Champions, the Jordan World of the world, and we have our Rudy Everin right here in Middletown. So, thank you, Mark.
And he won two regionals this weekend, so he's not letting his foot off the gas.
Thank you, Rudy. Good luck.
Good luck, Rudy.
Okay, let's go. Okay, item number five. At my request, resolution of the council proclaiming May as Mental Health Month in town.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion second to pass. Any conversation? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye. Motion act as board of license commission.
Second.
Okay, motion second, act as a board of license commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number six. Application of East Island Reserve LLC DBA, East Island Reserve, 969 East Main Road, for a Class BV liquor license to be used at the same premises. Requires advertising for public hearing and notification to abudus.
Motion received said application advertise for public hearing and notify abudus for public hearing to be held on June 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any conversation?
Yes.
Vice President.
Wendy, where is this? Is this?
Oh, it is?
Florida, how does this use of?
So they're looking for a liquor license? Okay.
They're looking for a license to serve drinks to their guests at the pool facility.
Okay.
That, just to clarify.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions?
Okay.
Here or none? We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven. Application admission LLC 58 Aquinic Avenue for a Class BV liquor license to be used at the same premises. Requires advertising for public hearing and notification to abudus. This is new.
Motion to receive said application advertise for public hearing and notify abudus for public hearing to be held on June 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any conversation?
Yes.
Vice President.
Where what? I can't, we can't hear you.
This was where Island Twins had requested an application for the old subway.
Oh, the old subway?
Yes.
The subway was.
Yes, so.
It's not the same.
Island Twins is not gonna be having a license there now. So these people have applied.
Okay.
Any further questions? Here or none? We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to reconvene as the town council.
Second.
Motion second to reconvene as a council. All in favor?
Aye. Motion approved the consent calendar minus items number 17, 18, 26, and 28.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number 17. Seventeen is the first one, correct?
Yep.
Okay, application six for special event permits for Sweetberry Farm, 19 Third Beach Road, for one Pettit wedding, Saturday, June 8th, excuse me. Castro Gilman wedding. Kayem Norris rehearsal dinner. Thomas Miller wedding. Orlando Avery wedding. All noted dates. And Sakai Haskell wedding, last one being October 26th, 2019, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Motion approves said special event permits.
Second.
Okay, conversation. Counselor Flynn?
Yes, thank you. And this is sort of a general question about the special event application. I just was wondering what the approval by the council includes for these applications. They're celebratory type events, and they're near residential neighborhoods, and would there be any inclusion of outside bands, fireworks, anything that might disturb the neighbors, or does that come as a separate request? Just wondering, you know, how these special event approvals, what the comprehension is of them.
I can only tell you about Sweetberry. They've asked for these for several years. Madam Clerk, I'll ask Mr. Brown, have we had any issues there, at anything at Sweetberry?
No, and they're all inside.
Oh, it's inside?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
We've never had an issue with any of that.
No issues.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know if it was simply that we were approving this to be happening in the town of Middletown on that calendar date, or if there were other approvals that were included in a special event application.
And we send all the special event applications to the police, the fire, the building official. So nothing gets approved. It never comes before the council until we have all their approvals first.
If they're doing anything like the activities I mentioned, you know, outdoor, you know, loud.
That would have been on the application.
It would be on this application, so it would state it.
Right.
Okay. It is the same question for number 18, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, so on number 17, we have a motion second to approve said special event permits. Any further conversation? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 18. Please note, Madam Clerk, that Counselor Lombardi is recusing. Application for two special event permits from St. Joseph's School, reunion weekend to be held, May 18th. Graduation dinner and luncheon to be held Sunday, May 26th. And from what I understand, they're gonna be inside of tents.
And my question was answered with number 17. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other councilor have any questions?
So, motion approves said special event permits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Right. Item number 26. Application Jida Shabat DBA Enhanced Beauty Browse, 62 Wave Avenue, for renewal of a tattoo license for the 2019-2020 licensing year.
Motion to grant said license renewal.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Counselor Flynn?
Thank you. So I pulled this off because I had recalled that when they got it a year ago, that there was a condition to the approval. And the condition per the minutes says that it would limit to the eyebrow procedure and signage not using the word "tattooing." And I'd just like to request that if there are conditions to renewals, I understand, Wendy, that the conditions follow the renewal, but when this goes on the docket, any residents who initially had that concern, they don't know that that's part of the renewal. And I'm wondering if the conditions can be put somewhere on the renewal application, so that the applicant's reminded, and the public knows that, oh, they don't need to worry, because that follows.
We can do that.
That would be very helpful, I think.
Okay, any other conversation? Here or none? We have a motion second to grant said license renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 28. Application of MAJ LLC DBA Rocco, Emir's Little Italy, 59 Aquinic Avenue, for renewal of the amusement license for the 2019-2020 licensing year.
Motion to grant said license renewal.
Second.
We have a second. Conversation. Counselor Flynn?
Thank you. I'd like to, is the applicant here in chambers, by any chance? I'd like to request that this be continued, so we can speak to the applicant, Mr. President. There are some activities that have gone on at the location that I'd like to inquire personally.
I agree with you. I think that's a prudent thing to do tonight. I'd like to have him here as well, so we could question.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, motion to continue.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, you'll make that notification to them that it's been continued, and we do want them here. Thank you. Okay, under licenses, 29. Application of Marco Bottega Boncani LLC, 36 Aquinic Avenue, for Victualling House License for the 2018-2019 licensing year.
Motion to grant said license contingent on building official, fire marshal, Public Works, and Board of Health approvals.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. Any conversation? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Other communications? Memorandum of Karen Day, Chairperson of the Middletown Tree Commission, update on civic appropriation use.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
The motion is second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Karen Day, you here? Okay, just a motion second, we'll receive it. Okay. Any further conversation? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 31. Continued from April 15th, 2019, regular meeting. Communication of Christine M. Offenberg, attorney-at-law with Enclosures Resolution supporting request of Flat Waves LLC regarding a public hearing for a BV liquor license.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Motion second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a couple people that want to speak. Nan Herro, Nan? Okay, you want to make the presentation for us? I'm sorry, Nan. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council.
Make sure you speak into that mic, please. Both of the above.
Okay. So, good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. My name is Shaun Bouchard. I'm here from the law offices of Silva, Thomas, Martland, and Offenberg, here this evening representing Flat Waves LLC. Wanted to just give a brief overview of what exactly it is that we're requesting at this time, as well as just a background on this application. So I'm joined this evening by Mr. Will Burgess, who's the owner and operator of Flat Waves, which I'm sure most of the members are familiar with, located on Aquinic Avenue. He's been operating that business for over nine years, and has been enjoying some pretty strong success when it comes to serving during the lunch hour. However, in the past few years, there's been a real struggle to maintain the service during the dinner hours, specifically losing out in competition to several local restaurants who were able to serve beer, wine, and other spirits to their customers, which we've heard from several patrons has been a reason for their absence during the dinner hours. And at this time, what we were hoping to do was to seek the ability to obtain a liquor license in order to serve liquor, our alcohol sales, in order to try and boost the revenue and stay competitive with the market. At this time, that would be the intention. Now, I know that the application itself is a little confusing as to what exactly it is that we're requesting from the town councils this time, as it's not actually a liquor license application. This is actually a request for a resolution in support of a legislative change. The reason for that is that the Rhode Island statutes require that no town be allowed to issue a liquor license to a building that's located within 200 yards, or 200 feet, sorry, of a school or church. The location that we're discussing currently is 120 feet from the property line of Godday Middle School. Now, it's 800 feet to the building, but that's not how you measure that. It is to the property line, and at this time, we are within that requirement. So what we are seeking to do is have an exemption passed with the legislative package to allow the town of Middletown to issue a liquor license for that property. Having heard from members of the public, as well as some feedback from the school committee when we went before them, we do have a number of conditions that we're willing to agree to at this time, in order to try and reduce some of the potential concerns, and try and limit what exactly it is that we're requesting. So I would ask that you just bear with me while I explain some of the conditions that we'd be agreeing to at this time. So although the correspondence indicated this is in request for a BV liquor license, we would limit this to a BL, so only beer and wine sales, no spirits or anything of that sort to be sold on premises. In terms of the actual alcohol sales, we would be willing to limit the alcohol sales during the actual weekdays, Monday through Friday, to only be sold from 5:00 p.m. to close, with the understanding that that would be after school hours, and so there would be no alcohol sales during the day when kids might be accessing the premises. So that limitation would carry from the Tuesday of Labor Day through to June 30th. That would be in order to encapsulate the school year, so that way, during the school year, there would be no alcohol sales during the day when kids would be walking by the premises. In addition to that, we'd be limiting our hours of operation to be able to close only at 10:00 p.m., so that way, this is not gonna be a late night operation or anything of the sort. Again, the intention here is simply to limit ourselves to be able to serve beer and wine during the dinner hour. Some of these conditions were also kind of more directed towards the zoning board, but I want to make sure we're clear on what we're going to be agreeing to. For those of you who are familiar with the premises, there is an outdoor picnic table area. We would be roping that off, so that way, no alcohol would be consumed beyond those ropes. It would be a physical barrier that would make it very clear where the alcohol would be allowed to be consumed on premises. No closed containers would be allowed to be served to patrons. This is to prevent anybody from grabbing a beer and getting in their car, right? Our employees would be opening the beer and handing it to you directly, so that we would have to be consumed on site. As you're, I'm sure the council is familiar, with any liquor license, the employees would be required to be tip certified, so they would be very much aware of, you know, carding members of the public who might be accessing it, and then, you know, preventing any overconsumption. And then, in terms of the special use permit decision, which would ultimately have to be obtained for any liquor license in connection with the restaurant use, we would also make sure that it's granted for this plot lot only, and that it be limited only to the BVL license in that location. And the intention here is to make sure that this is not something that could be transferred to allow a bar to, you know, operate in that location in the future. We're trying to make sure that this is simply for the Flat Waves operation that currently exists, limited to the times that kids are not gonna be around the premises. And in addition to that, you know, making sure that this is sold appropriately, and that it's managed correctly. Mr. Burgess does have a track record of success and commitment to the community. This is not a, you know, a new operator coming in. This is simply trying to help out a small business in the location. I know I've taken up a bunch of your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have in connection with this. Mr. Burgess is also here, should you have any questions. And I think at this time, I'd rather just open it up to the public comment, as I'm sure there's many members of the public who would like to provide input.
Any councilors have any questions right now? Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm gonna ask if you could take the timer and place it on the podium, okay? And the people that have signed up to make comments, I'm gonna hold everybody to the time tonight. We have a long night ahead of us, and we're gonna adhere to the time. Does it reach Madam Clerk?
I'd have to unplug underneath.
No, that's okay. Let's leave it here then. Okay? But if you could utilize the timer, I appreciate it. Okay. We have several people that would like to speak. Nan Herro, Nan? Name and address, please.
Thank you, Council President Silva, and members of the town council. My name is Nan Heru, and I live at 51 Bay Ridge Drive in Middletown. Flat Waves has traditionally been a lunch place and survived for nine years as such. Now they want to stay open until 10:00 and start serving beer and wine at 5:00 p.m. It isn't a site that's conducive to a dinner crowd with such a small space and a limited menu. Once the plot is approved for a BV license, that means to future buyers... Once the plot is approved for a BV license, that means to future buyers, a bay, there will be restrictions, but these restrictions can be negotiated too. It's a foot in the door. There have been thirty-eight exemptions in Rhode Island, two Title III, three-seven-nineteen, the alcoholic beverage title. And where do we draw the line for distance from school property? That rule was put in for a reason, and I think that we need to adhere to it and respect it. Is it one hundred and nineteen feet? Is it a hundred feet? Is it fifty feet? You've all heard the slippery slope argument. This is a prime example, and it affects our kids. School committee member Teresa Spangler said it wasn't the duty of a business to accommodate our kids. Well, I think in this case, it isn't our kids who have to accommodate a business, which then may increase their exposure to alcohol. There are plenty of other locations which are more than two hundred feet. Besides, and this is a quote from the Zoning Enabling Act, Chapter forty-five-twenty-four dash forty-one, "In granting a variance, the fact that the use may be more profitable or that a structure may be more valuable after the relief is granted is not grounds for relief." Let's see. How are we to monitor the sale of alcohol, whether or not the beers and wines are kept out of sight of our kids who may be visiting Flat Waves? And I count my grandsons among them. They love the shaved ice. This is a great gathering spot for kids who walk there after the schools. I for one will be dropping in to see if the alcohol is stored in a locked container out of sight of the customers. What kind of message does this send to our children? That a law meant to reduce minors' exposure to alcohol and keep them safe is not that important? This law has been in effect for many decades and was put into our codes for a reason. That reason still exists, and that reason is the health and well-being of our kids. I strongly urge you to vote no on this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan. Anton Viveras, Mr. Viveras?
Anton Viveras, one-ten Indian Hill Road. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I look back on history, and I remember the Glass Onion, when they were at the Newport Vineyards, and then they had to move because they wanted to expand. They bought a piece of property, and then they found out it was within two hundred feet of a, of a school, could not get a liquor license. You had KJs with their outside patio, want to extend their liquor license to include the patio. They had a problem, couldn't, could not, was not approved. Then they came back and they remodeled, they did their kitchen, they expanded it, they took, they lost a couple of seats inside, they wanted to, again, expand it to the outside, and again, they would refuse. I believe that we are going to be opening up Pandora's Box if we approve this. Two hundred feet down to one hundred and nineteen feet. The school department, there's, they, the children, they have sports on the, on the property. That's there till after five o'clock. And they have football practice on weekends, different times of the week, could get a head start, especially at the beginning of school. I think this is a mistake. If they want a variance of the law, they are apply for it first to the state and then come and say, we have this, we like the liquor license. And I do believe that the school department overstepped their bounds and did not have the best interest of our children at heart when they took part in this and helped supposedly approve it to give the applicant further support. I urge the council to reject it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viveras.
Thank you.
Okay, Teresa Spangler?
My last sentence. Thank you. Teresa Spangler, eleven-eleven Wapping Road. So yes, as I have a couple different hats on, I have a school committee member hat on, I have a parent of a student who walks by that, by Flat Waves every single day, and I'm a small business owner and taxpayer in this community. The Flat Waves did come before the school department, and the school department did support the fact that they could pursue this with specific detailed restrictions. And Flat Waves completely agreed with that, to do the dinner hour from five PM on, where when students are not walking past the restaurant any longer. They do walk past there at two o'clock in the afternoon, two-thirty, three o'clock, four o'clock, but they're not walking past there anymore after four. I know, I've had, boys and girls, students walking back and forth for different sports. When I mentioned this to Flat Waves, they were absolutely respected and respectful of that, and immediately jumped to the five o'clock window and said, that makes perfect sense, they don't want anything to do with worrying about students. The Tuesday after Labor Day to June thirtieth, it's doing it Monday through Friday at five o'clock. Again, it's being, it's being cognizant of the school year, July first to Labor Day, and we, and Saturdays when they're opened, they should be able to do lunch and dinner. They're a restaurant, and we have numerous restaurants on Aquinic Avenue that serve just beer and wine and have the beer and wine refrigerator behind the counter, so it's very monitored and controlled with tip-certified staff. Flat Waves is a small business trying to survive in this community. As you talked about earlier about taxes, small businesses have the right to, to survive. Yes, it is a hangout for our Middletown students, no doubt. They stop in there, they buy a slushie, and sometimes they go in and sit down, two, three, four, or five kids, and don't buy anything, and they're hanging out. And Flat Waves has no problem with that, which is wonderful that they're supporting our community. They're willing to make accommodations, and they are very supportive of our substance abuse task force, which is important part of our school community, of course. But at this point, looking at that restaurant, yes, they are within the eight hundred, the eighty feet of proximity of the school border, but they're not within the school building. Even to the parking lot is over, is, I believe, eight hundred feet up to the parking lot at Godday. So yes, but students are walking through. But with these restrictions and these accommodations and tip-certified staff, I can't imagine that an eighth grader is going to be able to walk in there and purchase alcohol. With the restrictions outside on the patio and being monitored and having the roped-off area, students aren't going to be able to just, you have to buy the alcohol at the countertop and be carrying it in. You go to, I don't want to name names for other restaurants, but there are numerous restaurants that you go up to the counter, and students are hanging out in there as well, and someone buys a beer and goes and sits outside. We have those approvals already on Aquinic Avenue. So just because this is next to a school, I think that the restrictions and the, and the limitations should be looked at carefully when considering this for approval or not approval. Because if they're willing to comply and follow those guidelines and restrictions to make sure our students are safe, that's important. They have proven to be a responsible, well-respected business and should be allowed to be able to get this BL license. It is not their responsibility to monitor completely where those, where students are. It is me, as a parent, it's my responsibility to know where my child is, what they're doing, what's going on. And I think that with tip-certified staff, this organization, this restaurant, is going to be absolutely doing due diligence with their staff, making sure that this is done correctly. Because nobody would want anything to happen to any kind of student. But again, there are numerous restaurants on Aquinic Avenue that sell alcohol over the counter, that you can take that beer and step outside. So why would, would this be any different? And I think that, you know, this is Small Business Week. Supporting and encouraging small businesses to stay afloat, I think this is something that needs to really be considered for approving for Flat Waves to be able to have the limited restricted BL license. And don't forget, this has to go before legislation first. So that, I think what's happening tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, this is what, the town council would be approving this to go to legislation? Is that correct?
I believe that's what, Mr. Bouchard, you correct me, but I believe that's what the applicant is requesting.
So then at that point, the legislators would be able to make the final decision and then come back to you?
No, that's not, that's, it's got to come back to us for the lawyers. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Okay. Susan Whitney, Susan? Do you want to make some comments regarding this?
Hi, I'm Susan Whitney, thirteen Stimson Street, Middletown. I do not support the exemption for Flat Waves. Being a mom with two students in the school system, I feel like it's located too close to the school. I'm concerned also with the after hours, five o'clock, there are sports going on. Weekends in the summer, there are summer camps, summer school. So I feel like having it so close to the school could normalize the use of alcohol, normalize this use for the kids, so I do not support it.
Thank you, Susan. I have another Susan that just put the paperwork in. I can't read your, come on up, Susan.
Shane.
Shane, okay. Name and address, please, Susan.
Three-forty-one Boulevard, Middletown. I also object to the exemption. I think at the heart of this matter, I'm former chair of the Middletown Prevention Coalition. I believe we've had an amazing relationship with the town, but I think at the heart of this matter is we have a two-hundred-foot safety zone around our school. I would strongly object to the town beginning to dismantle that. Let's keep the safety zone where it is. I believe what I heard is that this law has been on the books for eighty years, and there have only been thirty-six exemptions. I, I just don't want to see Middletown in that category. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay. Any councilors like to make any comments? Counselor Lombardi?
Mr. President, members of the public, so I promised myself that I would be objective on this. I've heard from a lot of parents, I've heard from representatives of this business, and I've, I'm weighing this out in my mind, and I'm trying to be fair, but I'm going to tell you the truth. So after almost thirty years in law enforcement, having sat on the Prevention Coalition before I was on the council, having sat on the juvenile hearing board, and having worked with our youth, as some of you heard earlier, as a coach, there are a lot of reasons why this is not a good idea. I have no doubt that the owners of this business are responsible, fine business people. I have no doubt about that. Rest assured. It's not about whether or not you're going to allow our kids to be served. It isn't about that. It's about the fact that this law's been on the books for eighty years, and I had somebody say to me, it's archaic. It's not archaic. There's a reason why it's only been, why it's been on the books for eighty years, and the reason, and the reason why, and there's a reason why there's only been thirty-eight We're opening the door, if we grant this, to go up to the legislature. But again, I know you take it on a case-by-case basis, but I think we open the door for other people to come to us and say, well, you did it for them. Well, because we did it for them doesn't mean we have to do it for someone else. So that's one, a couple of points. The, the new fields that are going to go in over at the drive-in, that the request of the committee and the council was that we make those new fields contiguous with the Godday fields, we make, we want it to be part of that complex. Those fields, we hope, are going to be used a good portion of the year, and with the possibility of lights being used, being there, our kids are going to be there. Our kids, they are now at night up at the Godday fields, at night, because there are lights there at the football fields. It goes on all the time. We have summer basketball camps on the, on the, the basketball courts at Godday. We have summer school. So to say that that's not going to happen, to say that it's not being used all the time, and the fact of the matter, with those new fields being right across the street, within that two-hundred-foot zone limit, maybe even closer, I don't think it's a good idea. The, the statement that was just made about the responsibility falls on the parents, oh, yeah, I agree with you. The responsibility falls on the parents who know where your kids are, but you also know that when your kids are in an after-school activity, an evening activity, and they're being monitored by coaches, and they walk home at night, that if they stop at this business, that yes, by law, the responsibility falls on the business owner, not on the parent. It falls on the business owner. And I will say it again, I have no doubt in my mind, I would like to believe that our young people wouldn't be served there. But as a former police officer, I know what can happen. Things fall through the cracks. Trust me. It can happen. So with that said, and I, I just can't emphasize it enough, I can't support this. I would encourage my fellow councilors not to support this. We're asking for, we're asking for problems down the road, and not just with them, but in general across the board. So I can't support it.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn?
Could I ask a couple of questions to Mr. Bouchard, that, just to cover all bases, if you don't mind? I missed it the first round. So we, we got packages on April fifteenth and today, were they exactly the same?
They should be. Yeah, there was no additional submission from our end.
Except for the BV and the BL request?
Correct. Yeah, we've, yeah, we have since altered from a BV to a more limited BL.
Okay. And where would the conditions show up in the documentation? Is that something at the state level or when you come back?
So wouldn't be in the state level, and that's simply because of the way the exemptions are placed into the legislature. What we would do would be to put those specifically into the, the zoning approval that would have to accompany any liquor license application, right? In order to, this is regardless of whether you're in the school zone or not, if you're a business, if you're a restaurant attempting to operate with liquor license, you need to go before zoning and get a, a special use permit to allow that. So what we would do is put all the conditions we've discussed into the zoning decision and articulate within the zoning decision that would be recorded inland evidence records of exactly what is being authorized to operate in that location. And then at that point, that special use permit would be walked to the land, that would identify what, if anything, the town council would be able to authorize for that use, right? So to give you an example, which we'll get to later, would be that Mission LLC, it was initially a BV application that the zoning board limited to a BL, right? Saying that we don't want to see, you know, additional spirits or anything like that do beer and wine. So what the zoning board would be able to do would be condition that. So we're agreeing to those conditions and would place them in the land evidence records, and that would be tied to that plat lot, so that way if any other, you know, if for some reason the business was sold or it moved on, the zoning would still articulate what could operate there. It wouldn't be that, you know, oh, you can just obtain any sort of liquor license, it would be specific to that zoning decision, and that if for any reason somebody wanted to alter that, they would have to go back and ask for an alteration to the zoning approval, so you would still have zoning and town council review at that point.
So just to clarify, the, the business, so the state level, you know, if you were, got the exemption?
Correct.
It was for the, the property?
Correct.
So it could be sold to another owner?
Right.
And that exemption would follow the property?
Correct. And so this was why we wanted to make sure that we had the limitations on exactly what it was that would be allowed, so that way there wouldn't be this future expansion to a bar or anything of that sort. We would have that specifically in there to prevent that sort of expansion, because we are sensitive to that concern, and we were trying to provide that limitation, you know, moving forward without, you know, severe oversight from the, from the town board, zoning, town council, anything of that sort.
Okay. You say in your March twenty-sixth letter that the resolution is in the process of being submitted to the Rhode Island Senate and House of Representatives. Has that been submitted?
No.
It has not?
No, that has not been submitted. Before we were going to do that, we wanted to have letters of no objection from both the town council and the school committee. If, if the town council and the school committee aren't on board with this, it's not, there's no sense for us to try and move forward with it. We would, you know, we're still members of the community, we still want to, you know, make sure we're respecting the wishes of the town, and if the town council and school committee weren't on board with this, it's not something we would be moving forward with. And so that was why it was continued. At the last hearing, we went before the school committee, received a positive vote in favor, you know, the, the letter of no objection, so that's why we're now moving forward with tonight's hearing.
Okay. And last question. In the documentation, I actually pored through it, you noted in the exception, I think it was the list of exceptions, that number twenty-six and twenty-seven were noted for Middletown and Portsmouth? And can you describe the properties or the situation? Do you know?
So the Portsmouth is the, I believe that's the Portsmouth Public House, and then the, the Middletown- And then the, the Middletown one is an interesting one, simply from the standpoint that that never actually ended up... They went through all the process of getting the exemption, and then never moved forward with it. It was initially going to be a Buffalo Wild Wings, which is located at what is now Staples. And so that was, again, it's also important to point out that this is for, you know, it's 200 feet of a school or a church. That one was in connection with the church. And they were able to get the vote from the church and the town to approve it. And then ultimately, never moved forward with, you know, obtaining a liquor license.
I'm not familiar with the public house. Where's the school or church to that one?
Is it King's Grant?
What's the school? Oh, is it the church, the White Church? Okay. Okay, I just wanted to know what those were.
Yep, nope, good questions.
Okay, so that's questions. I'm going to wait and come back, I think.
Vice President.
I have a sort of a question. So, so why would you go before the school committee if they have no authority to approve?
So ultimately, the decision was that we wanted to make sure, since we're asking for the ability to obtain a liquor license within 200 feet of a school, it would make sense to, you know, gauge the interest of the school committee to even entertain this. Even though they're not the permitting authority, ultimately, we're getting a request from their kids, their property, and it would, it felt pertinent for us to, you know, obtain their, their input, their support. Ultimately, you know, the conditions that we've discussed, again, were part of that discussion. I think it was certainly a productive endeavor for our sake, even though it's not something that ultimately binds any legislative action or anything like that. We could certainly, I guess, move forward with attempted legislative change without the support of the school committee. But that would, again, from more of a community standpoint, it would make no sense to go forward and obtain an exemption for a 200-foot buffer from a property owner that ultimately has no say. So that was more of an attempt to try and work within the community to gauge that interest in their input before going forward.
I have a question for your client.
Yep.
So how long have you been at Flat Waves? How long have you owned Flat Waves?
Could you name an address, please?
Will Burgess, 48 Homer Street.
Is that, is that in Newport?
That's in Newport, yes.
Okay.
I opened Flat Waves in June of 2010, and I've been the owner ever since.
Okay. Is that your primary occupation?
That's it, that's me.
Is this restaurant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. So I guess just some comments from me. My feelings are, kind of echo Rick. I've heard nothing but good things about Flat Waves. I know the kids love it there and, you know, but that's, that's a whole separate issue than what you're asking for.
Certainly.
You know, with all due respect, I can't support this either because, well, because, you know, that, that law is a law for a reason. And so for me, it's a law that protects, to help protect children. I don't know if you know the history of that plaza, but about 15, 20 years ago, local businessmen tried, purchased that plaza in the, with the intent of making it a bar. Same, similar situation as the Glass Onion, when they used to be where Bricks is now. Didn't look like that. You know, they wanted to expand, and they actually had to get out of there because Noon's, you know, was going to do what they did with the winery. But they bought a piece or attempted to buy a piece on West Main Road, which is still a current residence, but it was next to the Green out there where the, where the children's daycare was. I forget the name of it. My Sam went there for one summer, but I can't remember the name of it. But, so, you know, they got turned down for that as well. So, and then the owner, the guy that bought the plaza here, ended up selling it to Butch Ambrel because, come to realize, he couldn't put his, his bar there. So he went to another location. He's successful there today. So, but I just think that, I'm not going to support this because, and I hope you keep doing what you're doing over there, because you do a good job.
I appreciate it.
That's not what this is about.
I understand that.
To me, it's about protecting the children. 200 feet's 200 feet. You can, Sean, you did a nice job of trying to paint it. You know, the building's this far away, and the parking lot that's far away. But the bottom line is, the property is 119 feet, 119 feet away, and the law's 200 feet. So I don't, I think once we set that precedent, there's no going back. Because we don't have a leg to stand on when the next person comes forward and says, "Well, you gave it." And even if we did support it, going from a BV to BL, to me, that's just a foot, that tells me what your intentions are. You know, you'd fail at poker, I guess, because you, you know, you went from BV to BL, and tell me, for me personally, tells me your intention is to, once you get a foot in the door, you're going to go for a full liquor license. And who knows what could happen? And, and the other liquor, other liquors licensed on that Quinick Avenue, yes, but they're not within the 200 feet.
And I understand that. And if I meant, the intention was never to go full BV, I didn't know that a BL was even available in Middletown. So when I had approached Chris Offenberg and Sean at their office, it was, you know, "We would like to serve limited, the beer and wine sales for the dinner business." And so when we started to draw it up, the BV was just what was presented. That was never the intention. And like Sean said, there's a couple of other businesses in Middletown and Newport. I don't want to name names, but not too many, especially not local names. But like Chipotle being one of them, I look at that as sort of the, the method is which we wanted to proceed with how we would do this, where they have that cooler in the back, behind the counter, and just have available for those patrons who want to come in and have a glass of wine or a beer with their dinner after the beach in the summertime, you know, in the evenings. The intention's never to be a full bar. I don't want to be a bar owner. Not that that matters to you guys, but, you know, it's, I don't, I'm not going to be late night. We would never stay open. I close at 8 o'clock right now. I'll never stay open later than 9:00. That's why we put it at 10:00. We're restricted to not staying open later than 10:00. It's not that bar. I believe, I heard the story just in the last two weeks about the gentleman who bought the property prior to Butch. And the intention, I believe, was very different from what we're pursuing. But again, I don't want to take too much time. Certainly.
It is. And so, you know, again, I hope you keep doing what you're doing there. And if the council decides to give that to you, then they give it to you. But I'm certainly not going to be part of that and set that precedent.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Counselor Santos.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you think of this when the Brick Alley Pub came forth with their request for the liquor license for the Grange?
That is a part of it. And there's been a handful of, of restaurants on Aquinick Ave, opening up between that one and some of like the new, some of the newer places down at Lower Aquinick. And it's getting a lot more competitive in that summer, after-the-beach kind of traffic. We're fighting a lot to stay competitive in the restaurant landscape in our area that's continuing to grow.
You do realize, once the bond door is open and the horses get away, you can't close the door.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Flynn.
So I just want to thank the citizens who came up and added to the conversation. Because I heard some things that, you know, that sports are much later and summer school, and things that, you know, hadn't really been considered, I guess, when the conditions were put forth. And that's why, you know, we want people to come to town council meetings because, you know, we're only seven, and we need, we need more input. But I just have to say, you know, and I did study it, and I do get it. And we want our small, local businesses to succeed. But one of the positions that I really can't get over is that the pure conflict that this has with the Middletown Prevention Coalition and the efforts that they have done for years. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm considering it almost hypocritical if I really support it because the town council as a body, they actually restricted retail businesses in the tobacco situation and, in order to protect our youth. So to follow through with not enforcing an existing alcohol ordinance to protect our youth, to restrict one business and not another, it just would be hypocritical. And I just think that we have to protect our youth across the board. And we also have to, you know, enforce our ordinances. They are there for a reason. And, you know, I think that the majority of the residents who we're supposed to be up here representing would, would be unwilling to go in a direction that doesn't meet the existing town ordinances. So I think I would not support this as well.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Just let me make a comment. I think you're running a great business there. I go there myself periodically. I think you do a great job there. I, I'm very, I was very concerned. Sean brought up, he referenced the, and made an reference to Buffalo Wild Wings. But I think that was regards to the church being within 200 feet, wasn't it? It's a little bit different than a school, than a church. And that was, and I don't even remember that we even approved that to send up. I think we had discussion on it, did we?
It was approved, I think, once the church stated that they did not have an objection to it being approved.
Yes. Yeah, a little bit difference with the church being there and with the school being there. So, but I want to, I want to commend you for the business that you do run in town.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other further conversation? Here or not? Item number 32. Continued from April 15, 2019, regular meeting. This is the resolution of the council, an act relating to alcoholic beverages retail sales.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, motion is second to pass the resolution to allow you to move forward. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 33. Communication of Tim Brown, Garday Middle School Boys Basketball Coach. Reference, request for support.
Okay, motion to receive said communication and appropriate, appropriate $535 from the council president's discretionary fund for the Middletown Middle School Boys Basketball Team to participate in the Narragansett Summer Basketball League this year.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Ladies and gentlemen, this is one of two items that we're going to be discussing tonight. And this routinely happens throughout the course of the year. This council goes above and beyond with just not only the financial allocation that we make to the school department and the school administration, but we also support a lot of these after-school activities. That the funds do not come from our allocation to the schools. It comes from our allocations to what we, this council believes, are in the best interests of our youth. So we have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number 34. Communication of Michael Yates, Girls Varsity Basketball Coach, Middletown High School. RE, request for support.
Motion to receive said communication and appropriate $425 from the council president's discretionary fund to participate in the North Kingstown Summer Basketball League this year.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. And again, ladies and gentlemen, another example, and this routinely happens, how we support our, our youth, and we want to see the best for them. Okay, motion is second. Any conversation? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number 35. This is the public hearing as advertised. Town of Middletown, application of BY 2018. Application, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG, for certain projects, and the amount is $743,497.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wilowski.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the town council, Ron Malansky, town planner. This is the second public hearing for this year's, it's actually program year, 2018, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant application. You've had the first hearing where we announced the program for this year and solicited input. During the second public hearing, you now have a list of proposed projects to be included in the town's Community Development Block Grant application. As you know, this program is funded through federal funding that is funneled through the state. And then in, in our situation, we're part of a pool of communities that compete for available funding for small, for small communities for various programs. In the Town of Middletown application, you'll see seven programs being proposed, plus a line for administration of the program. That last item, number eight, is for administration. The first two items on the list relate to public facilities. And these two programs or two applications, two projects, would be for town facilities. The first item being a proposal to request funding for the Middletown Senior Center to install an events pavilion at the outdoor area of the, of the property in back of the building. That is a request from the Senior Center Director for $46,100. And then the second public facility application is related to sidewalks at Oxbow Farms. You may recall that over the past several years, there's been an ongoing process of improving the sidewalks in that property. New concrete sidewalks were added as funding has allowed. Some dilapidated asphalt sidewalks were removed due to concerns about safety. And now we're continuing to seek funding to install some new concrete sidewalks in, in that area of town. The Senior Center project, Senior Centers are categorically eligible for CDBG funding due to their service to the senior population. And of course, the Oxbow Farms neighborhood is eligible is, as a low, moderate income neighborhood in the Town of Middletown. The remaining items on the application are for regional public service providers, nonprofit agencies. I think I'll turn it over to Christian Belvin here from Church Community Housing to discuss those applications. And as you know, Church, on an annual basis, has always helped us prepare these applications, and we're very thankful for their support.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. As you may be aware, the CDBG program has undergone various changes over the last few years to the way that the applications are accepted and the types of activities that can be applied for at any given time. It used to be that there was one annual application, at which point you applied for all of the activities that were eligible for CDBG funding. Now that's been broken out into a rolling set aside, where you can apply for housing and economic development and housing rehab activities during most of the year. And then there's still the annual application with the deadline of May 15th this year. That's what we're, this second hearing is for. And that's to apply for public facility and public service activities. The state has been encouraging municipalities to, to, well, has been encouraging the streamlining of CDBG applications to identi, through the process of identifying lead communities that apply for all of the regional activities just through that community and having other communities that benefit from that activity to assign their application slot to that lead community in order to facilitate that. So that instead of having a CDBG contract with Tiverton and Portsmouth and Middletown and Newport, individually, each of them having a contract and having to do the compliance and monitoring, that instead you identify one lead community, and you have one contract, and that contract then is what has to be monitored and complied with. And so in the past, the city of Newport had typically been the lead community for the Newport County communities. But this year, what we learned is that while the state has been encouraging the lead community structure, they, they hadn't anticipated that, that a lead community might receive so many applications that they would have an application that would far exceed $1 million because there's a maximum $1 million limitation that a municipality might, is, can receive in any CDBG grant year. So the city of Newport had three activities that totaled $1.3 million. When we realized that that was the case, and it didn't make any sense to just add more activities to that application that was already above the maximum that the city could receive. So the towns of Little Compton, Tiverton, Portsmouth, and Jamestown have transferred their, their public facility and public service application slots to the Town of Newport, to the Town of Middletown in order to apply for these other CDBG activities. And I'll go through the list of what they are. So the town, according to the CDBG rules, can apply for... Um, uh, so the town, uh, according to the CDBG rules, can apply for three public facility and two public service lots. I'll just list those that the town could have applied for without being a lead community. And so those are the, the, uh, the Middletown Senior Center Public Facility, application for $46,100. The, um, Oxbow Farms sidewalk, uh, activity for $280,525. Um, the, uh, the Looking Upwards, number five, that public facility. Uh, the bathroom renovations at those, uh, residences, uh, for $38,000. Those are your three public facility activities. And then the two public service would be Lucy's Hearth Program Support and $50,000. And then, um, public, the East Bay Cap, number six, that public service for $35,000. And the reason I skip over the McKinney Shelter one is that, uh, each municipality is limited to $100,000 total in public service unless you get the allocation, um, from other communities to allow you to apply for more than that $100,000. And that's, that's what you have here. I actually have copies of all of the, it's called an assignment and assumption form. So, uh, Little Compton, Tiverton, Portsmouth and Jamestown. And Newport actually has assigned, uh, its two public service slots to Middletown as well. I have copies of all of those assignment and assumption forms if you'd, you'd like them.
You can just give those to the court.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, please.
Let's let him get back to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Councilor. We have a, a question from Council Santos.
Okay, can I just?
Go ahead.
Finish the, the list? Um, so then the last one is the Community Housing Resource Board Housing Hotline for $42,000 and, uh, the McKinney Shelter, um, activity for $200,000. The Town Admin for $51,872.
All right. My question pertains to number four. Where the McKinney Cooperative Shelter for Homeless, they are serving homeless from Middletown too. Am I correct in that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Now, number six, they would also, uh, service, uh, people from Middletown who would need-
Correct.
Accidental work for $35,000.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so they would take care of Newport, I mean, Middletown?
Yes.
Any other community?
Yeah, these are all regional service providers, so.
They are, okay.
Yeah, they, um, I'm not, I don't know if they're limited to Newport County or a larger service area, but, um-
They would include Portsmouth?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any councilors?
Yes. Please, President. So I have a question, I don't know if it's Christian or Ron. So when I, I think about, um, maybe areas of town, I'm not sure if they qualify or not, but I know some of the lower income areas like Ludlow Road over that way, that, do they? Areas like that? I mean, I have nothing against, I'm all for what's on the, on the plate. I'm just trying to think of, because it's usually the same ones over and over again, which is fine if they qualify. But I didn't know if the town could benefit by that. You know, I remember years ago when I worked at Public Works, we put in all the sidewalks ourselves over, and the curbing in Ludlow and Buck and those areas over there. So I, I think, I don't know if they're considered low income or if-
We had, um, done a survey several years ago of that neighborhood and, and actually applied for funding within that neighborhood, never, never successfully got funding. Um, but I believe that we would have to go back out and survey. You have to interview residents and, and understand their income levels and whatnot before you become eligible. Uh, Christian, you can probably explain it better than I can.
Sure. All right.
Um, everything with the CDBG program has, um, gotten more stringent over the last few years. I actually was, uh, the person that did the survey of the Commodore Perry Village neighborhood. Um, we put together the survey form, we mailed it to all of the residents, and then we didn't get enough, uh, responses for the statistical significance. I actually went door to door and, you know, asked people to complete the survey and, uh, get enough respondents, um, to put together the analysis to show that that neighborhood was, uh, more than 51% low mod income. But, uh, I don't know why the state chose not to, uh, fund those applications. We used the survey results and submitted applications for that neighborhood year after year after year. And they, um, they just, uh, never awarded those funds. And now the, the requirements for the, the survey is, are significantly more, um, onerous. And, uh, they also used to just provide funding to municipalities to do the surveys. But now they, you're only eligible for the funding if the survey comes back and proves that it is more than 51% low mod income. And if, if it doesn't, then, uh, they, they say it hasn't benefited a low mod income population and therefore the town is on the hook for paying for the survey, so.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if, you know more about it than we do, obviously, but I don't know if I'd give up on it. Has anybody ever asked the state why they not, didn't choose to fund a neighborhood like that? I mean, it would only make sense to me, and-
Yeah. I can follow up with them. I, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure what they're, the, the problem is that, um, there's a committee that makes the funding decisions. And so the staff people that we talk to aren't actually the ones that made, made the decisions.
Okay.
But I can see if I can get any background.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense. If we're going to try and help lower income areas, I certainly think that's probably one of them. Um, and I would want to know why or what we need to do if they meet the qualifications and why aren't you funding it? You know?
Yeah, I'll see what they say.
Mr. President?
Council, embody.
So, I, I'm, you know, I normally, and I fully intend on supporting this CDBG thing, but this, this is HUD money, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, I want to make a point. That Oxbow Farms, before they met their, uh, mortgage requirements or whatever it was, came under the HUD umbrella. And they, and they were part of the 10% requirement that we have to the state to meet the low, uh, uh, to meet the, um- Right. The, the requirements for us to have affordable housing up to 10%. When they came out from under the HUD umbrella, they went away. And now we don't meet that requirement anymore.
Right.
And you know what? You can't have your cake and eat it too. You want the HUD money, you want to come under their umbrella, you want this kind of money. I find you're kind of hypocritical, the $280,000, um, when they, when they need it. But when it comes to the town's needs and when it comes to what, how it was helping out the Town of Middletown at one point, um, you know, we're struggling to meet that, 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 that level, that 10% level. We're really struggling hard. So, I'm just going to say that on the record tonight, that I'm going to support it because there are a lot of other good projects here. But that one sticks out like a sore thumb to me. And we just went through a, to an affordable housing forum that the AAPC put on. And that was one of the issues that came up. Oh, each town is, um, as I, as a, a city councilor from Newport put it, "Our neighbors to the, our neighbors to the north are not meeting their obligations." It's not for lack of trying.
Yeah, I would just, um, clarify that because of the affordability restrictions went away at the Oxbow Development, that's why those residents don't count towards your 10% any longer. But the way that, uh, an area benefit for the CDBG program is defined is based on the American Community Survey and the analysis that they do of the income, uh, of the residents in that census block group. So it's just, they're just two different things.
It's, it's, it's Washington doublespeak. All right? Let, let the owners who are profiting off from that property over there pay for this kind of stuff. Okay, if they want to come under the, under the HUD umbrella, let them come back under the HUD umbrella or something. But this is, I, I don't buy that, that baloney.
Okay, Council Santos.
I don't know if you can answer this or not. It's been many years since I've worked in the tax office. Who actually is the owner of Oxbow?
I don't, I don't know. I, the Church Community, um, hasn't been involved with the development of this particular, um, activity. It's come from the, the town.
Mr. Brown, is it an investment group? It's a corporation?
It's a corporation. But I, I think what we're looking at here is sidewalks in the right of way in Rogers Lane, which at some point the town accepted as a road. It's a town road.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it wasn't too long ago, we had a resident who approached the council after a meeting, concerned about the sidewalks on the south side that have been removed. And, um, and that's why it's here. Uh, there are, you know, I, I understand the argument of Oxbow Management, the corporation, and it's no longer Section 8, but there, there are residents out there that depend on the sidewalks and, uh, getting to the bus, the bus stop to, uh, to live in the community. So that's, that's, that's why it's on the list.
Yep.
Thank you, Sean.
We do get tax money out of Oxbow, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Christian, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in regards to this? Okay, seeing them.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to close the public hearing. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number 36. Resolution of the council, RE, PY 2018, application, Small Cities Community Development Block Grant for certain projects, the amount is $743,497.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to pass. Any further conversation?
Just, just one question. Wendy, this is the second public hearing, right? It remained open? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Usually it says that?
Yeah, but we didn't leave it open last time. We closed it last time. So we're going to open it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we have a motion is second. To pass said resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number 37, continued from April 15, 2019. This is a regular meeting. An ordinance of the Town of Middletown, this is the second reading. Madam Clerk, please note that, um, Councilman Flynn is recusing herself. An ordinance and amendment to the Town Code, Title IX, 11, General Regulations, Chapter 98, Short-Term Residential Leases, Section 98.08, Fee in Section 98.99, Enforcement, Penalty for Violation, see attached ordinance. Please note that, uh, Councilor Toronto is also recusing himself.
Mr. President, um, we had a discussion, uh, at the previous meeting about, there's two changes that are in the amendment in front of the council right now, has to do with increasing registration fees and increasing fines. There were also discussions about potentially other changes to the ordinance. Following the last meeting, the administrator, myself, had a meeting with, uh, Chief Cure, other members of the Police Department, as well as the Building Department, to talk about the enforcement of the ordinance. And as a result of that discussion, came up with some recommendations for additional changes to the ordinance, which we think will make the ordinance easier and, and more effective to enforce. Um, so the suggestion would be that we essentially withdraw, rather than reviewing those things piecemeal, to, to withdraw this at this time and we'll present a comprehensive amendment with those other recommendations to you at the next meeting. It's, it's up to the council's discretion.
I want to ask my councilors, what do you feel about it? I don't, I don't have an issue with it. I don't have an issue with it. Okay, we do have, um-
We just have residents sitting there.
We have Mike, oh yeah, Mike Flynn. Mike, do you want to make any comments or, you heard what the solicitor, please come up to the mic. You know, you heard what the solicitor has said, so there'd be some further recommendations.
I'm Mike Flynn, 34 Warren Ave, Middletown, Rhode Island. Um, and thank you, Mr. President and council members for listening to me. Um, so it's great that we have some more coming up, I appreciate that. Um, and don't take this the wrong way, but I sent an email, I spoke at the April 1st meeting. Um, it came up again at the, or was going to come up again at the April 15th meeting. On April 12th, I sent an email to the Town Council saying, "Hey, I've looked at this and it looks the same, what's going on?" Didn't hear from anybody. I just would ask that if a resident, me, anybody, you know, communicates with you guys, come back and say something. You're an idiot, good idea, something, just come back and say something. That's all. Um, and then once we see the, the new, uh, don't say that, really. Once we see the new, um, ordinance, then I may have more to say, but I just wanted to get that out there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
May I say something, please?
Yes.
I don't always get emails from residents because of how my email is listed in the town. It's under T. Santos. I don't always get that. So, if I didn't get it, I didn't get it.
Okay, there's a-
Understood.
There's a general email and maybe we should just make sure it works.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. So, we'll make a motion to, um-
Motion to continue.
Second.
And a motion is-
Motion to withdraw. Motion to withdraw.
Second.
And a motion is second to withdraw. All in favor?
Aye.
You don't need a motion to put the next one on, do you, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay. Item number 38. An ordinance of the Town of Middletown, this is the first reading. An ordinance and amendment to the Town Code, Title VII, Traffic Code, section, new section. Crescent Road is designated as a one-way from Purgatory Road, heading in a northwesterly direction to Equidnic Avenue, see attached ordinance.
Motion to receive said ordinance on its first reading.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to receive on its first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Pat Rooney, Pat?
Good evening. I'd like to preface my-
Pat, I need you formally naming that.
I'm sorry, Pat Rooney, Fort Tuckerman Terrace. Preface my comments by saying I've lived on Easton's Point for 40 years. So it comes from a lot of history, my, my observations of this. One, I guess the first thing is, why does it have to go on a one-way street? I've lived there for 40 years. I use it for cutoff to come, avoid the traffic light down at Equidnic and, and Memorial Boulevard to get home, and this is going to impede my ability to do that. So, what I'm, is, the main question is, why? Why does it have to go to one way? It's got to go to one way for some reason. Why one way north? Were the residents ever asked, or is this the first time we're being polled about this before it becomes a resolution? Uh, we lose an option for, uh, one traffic to get to Easton's Point and the beaches. This is going to force a lot of problems for southbound traffic. They have to now to go down to the light, uh, make a left to get to the beaches, to get to Easton's Point. And I know Dennis can probably, you know, knows that from living out near me as well. To get there is going to be a nightmare. It's a nightmare now in the summer. The traffic light would create a major backup, just little room for two cars. One trying to turn left doesn't leave much space for one trying to go around to continue the ride to Newport. Uh, residents will bypass this to go through Walcott, Center, Alston, Ellery, Renfrew. Residents say it will be impacted by this increase in traffic. Cars passing, bypassing the light to head to Newport. You're stuck in the, leaving the beach, you want to go to Newport, there's a line of traffic, you take a little cut sometimes up Crescent. And then you take a left-hand turn, you get back into Newport. That's going to be difficult. So now, the way I look at the way the traffic flow is going to be in front of the liquor store there, is instead of going straight, you're going to go left and take a right to go north on Equidnic Avenue. That is going to be a major roadblock. You're not going to be able to turn right to get on to the northbound side of Equidnic Avenue. I assume that all the work being done down there on Equidnic Avenue, outside of Crescent Avenue, is state-funded and state-directed and state-manded. Um, I don't understand why it's all being done without any input from the town, from the residents, and the people that have lived out there and known about it. Uh, it's probably too late based on the work that's already taken place. I think this bump out that has taken place in front of Atlantic, uh, whatever it's called now, Newport Beach Club, is going to be a nightmare because people coming from Newport now can't go to Easton's Point and Second and Third Beach. They're going to have to go around and take the right at the light. That light has only got space for one car. You're not going to have any cars able to turn right and, uh, speed up the traffic while coming out of Newport. So again, those are my comments, my experience, 40 years of living on Easton's Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I'm going to, I'm going to, Mr. Brown, we had a, and Pat, if you could just stay up there for a minute. We had a, we had a number of public hearings on this.
Okay.
And this goes back, but, but I understand, people wouldn't, you know, when it finally hits them, they see it, now reality strikes. But, uh, Mr. Brown, if you can recall, could you just give a brief overview of what we went through the process to get to where we are here today?
Sure. Uh, so this is a process that began approximately 2007. Um, that was the first set of reports that talked about making changes in the, uh, traffic flow at the intersections along Equidnic Avenue, looking at Equidnic and Valley, uh, Newport Avenue, Crescent and, uh, Purgatory. That has been discussed through the years, and there was actually two hearings from the council. Uh, one in two thousand sixteen, one in two thousand eight, in which there was, uh, more or less a public hearing, resolutions passed by the town council, um, authorizing the, uh, the change in the intersections. Uh, the changes themselves are based on safety studies, um, that were completed and, uh, by the Department of Transportation. They're funded from safety, uh, safety funds from the federal government. And, uh, you know, that, that's been the process, and I think, uh, it has been a very public process. And, uh, as you're stating, I think now, now that it's being implemented, people are, are noting the change. And it is going to have an impact on traffic as the, the safety, the safety aspect is implemented. It just, you can't have the, there's a, there's a trade-off between safety and, and pushing cars. Uh, that's just, uh, the reality of that, so...
Is the safety for pedestrians, is that the safety issue?
Uh, both. So both, both traffic and for pedestrians.
So, kind of an offhand comment, but the increase of the hotels down there is creating a pedestrian comp, uh, department issue. Because you're not going to have much of a problem with cars hitting people. No cars are going to be moving down at that corner. Is there going to be a left-turn lane at that corner, a left-turn devoted light to take a left in front of the Newport Beach Club to go up to the beaches and, and Easton's Point? I haven't seen anything, I've looked at some of the information, I don't see where there's going to be a devoted left-turn lane there. There isn't space for it. That...
A left-turn going south.
If you think people are going to come down to Aquidnic Avenue and turn left to get to the beaches, you're going to have traffic backed up to Green End Avenue.
Correct.
In the season.
There will be a backup, but, I mean, there's a backup now, it's, it's, it already backs up.
Yeah, to Cumberland Farm.
Oh no, it backs up further than that, backs up to the light.
Well, that's, that's north where I go, so I don't have to see it.
You don't worry about that.
You don't worry about that, that's all I see.
Northernly, I don't worry about that. But it's going to be a nightmare. It's going to be an, and you're going to push traffic as people, I mean, if I'm leaving Second Beach, and I'm trying to go back to Fall River or Massachusetts, I've got options, I've got Paradise Avenue, I've got Walcott, and now I'm going to come down to Aquidnic and go one-way north on Crescent. And, you have, and then you can also go down to the light, you've got four options to do it. Why are you taking away one? You can go to the light for the fourth option. You're taking away the one option to go left to go back up to the point, and to the beaches.
I think the point is, Pat, though, um, there was a number, and I can attest to a number of public hearings.
Okay.
We had, uh, Rhode Island Department of Transportation down here, and as Mister Brown said, we had a number of safety studies done, and we solicited as, as, as much public input that we could from the residents in the area. So, unfortunately, uh, we weren't, uh...
Another neighbor mine said the same thing, he hasn't heard anything about it.
Well, I can...
It's across the street from you, I know you've had a conversation.
I can assure you, for those of us that sat through them, we had them.
Yeah?
You know, for sure.
For public comment that were sought out?
Absolutely.
Did you have any residents from Easton's Point come up and speak, or, or say anything about it?
At the time, everybody had the opportunity to come in.
Do you remember people from Easton's Point coming up with my comments?
You know, it's been several years, Pat.
Yes, there was.
There was?
There was, yeah. Well, I mean, a lot of the conversation was also around all the other changes that were being made down there. So they were kind of incorporating the overall landscaping and the, the, the projects that we have going on down there. So they did discuss that road, the changes to the road. It was, it was a big concern, people were very concerned about both topics that you're talking about.
So this was before you were council, right?
Uh, during, no, it was during.
Delighted, pardon, for...
Well, a number of us on Easton's Point don't have any recollection of hearing about this, or being solicited about it, so...
Okay. It's going to create...
Tom from Body, you want to make a comment? It's going to create a big comment.
Pat, I appreciate your comments, and, uh, I remember the, um, the public hearings going back to my first term, and I'm in my third term. I, I looked at it from a couple of different viewpoints, I work up on the hill, I'm up at, I work up at, uh, St. George's, and I drive that area all the time.
Yep.
A lot of factors have caused the backups up on that road, particularly when they changed the traffic pattern on Memorial Boulevard going into, into Newport, big change, they shouldn't have ever done that. But we expressed, uh, some of the concerns about losing the slip lane, and about the backup in the summertime with traffic, and how do we remedy that, with or without these changes? And I agree with you, that's going to make them worse. I don't like this particular change, and I'm not going to support it. Just not.
Is this a town-directed or a state-directed?
Well, the, the state did the, this is the state that, that studied, as Sean said. And it was all part of, really, at the end of the day, it's all part of the, the, uh, as they call it, traffic calming, pedestrian safety, widening of the sidewalk, the whole project down there in that, in that business district. Um, some of it's going to be good. You know, for some, in certain ways, you want to slow traffic down a little bit for safety, pedestrian safety, no doubt, no doubt about it. The wider sidewalks and that, so, and it's coming, and we're going to see the changes. But unfortunately, I think, one, one of the more drastic changes with what's going on in front of the beach club, and, and of course, the proposal to make this one-way, I, I don't support it, I, it just, it does, I don't get it. I don't see what, I just don't get it. So I'm not going to support the, the change.
I'm just curious, this is the town direction, or is the state recommending Crescent Street be one-way?
This was the state recommendation through the safety studies, correct?
It's a cooperative effort.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, the state doesn't shove it down our throats, they ask for our input. And, at the end of the day, they, they did get input, and to Bob's point, and Dennis's, um, there were a number of pub, public hearings. Matter of fact, some of it was even brought up when they talked about the Atlantic Beach Master Plan. And they showed the different, the changes, the way things were going to happen.
That was when it was announced.
Yeah, but I mean, prior to that, we had DOT in front of us, and they talked about these changes, the loss of the slip lane and a few other things. So, yeah, there were, there were people who did come in and talk, some people came in and talked when they, when it was the Atlantic Beach Master Plan overview. You know, and you can't be in everything, I get it, I understand that. But, um, some of it is good, some of it's not so good. But, at the end of the day, you know, the, the change is happening, but this particular one, I don't, I don't particularly care for. I don't, I don't get this one.
On a Saturday and Sunday afternoon in the summer, four o'clock, traffic's backed up to, to Eustis. It's going to get out of Memorial Boulevard all the way up to Bellevue.
I agree with you.
It's going to be crazy.
Vice President. So, um, Pat, you made some valid points. It's, it's a first reading. We've had a good working relationship with the state. I mean, we can do one of two things, either reject it, or approve it. And if we do approve it, then we could monitor it.
Right, so what the council had asked...
Or just reject it.
Correct, so, we had asked DOT to modify the design so that the road can revert back to a two-way if the pattern doesn't work. Um, so, to your point, you, you can approve, disapprove, or monitor, and if it doesn't work, we can, we can turn it back.
So the second reading of this ordinance will be at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we get a little time, more time to digest it, and, you know, take, certainly take your comments into consideration.
Pat, if I, if I recall correctly, the overwhelming emphasis on that area was pedestrian safety. Everybody down there was super concerned. In fact, I remember somebody saying, I don't care if the traffic stopped, lugs, nobody gets hit by a car, because my daughter and my grandson almost got hit by a car. I can almost remember that verbatim, that gentleman saying that. And it was pedestrian safety was the number-one priority.
Okay. I, believe me, that's the last thing I want to see happen, too, I've got great kids as well, I've gone out of that area, too. But, you've got, sorry. You've got, uh, you've got at least two or three crosswalks down there that I can think of, as I'm picturing them now. Um, and I don't know what, is the traffic light going to change? Is it going to be the same traffic light that's there, that's not part of the changes?
It's going to change. Mister Brown, and also the pedestrian crosswalks are going to be changed, too, right?
Correct, there'll be changes in crosswalks and changes in lights.
All right, well...
Come to the next meeting.
Sorry?
Come to the next meeting.
All right, see you then.
Mister President.
See you in forty years.
Thank you, Pat. Mister President, just real quick.
Counselor Toronto.
Yes, the, so, I do recall, Sean, that they did say that they would monitor it, and if it became a congestion issue on the one-way, they would have the ability to turn it back to a two-way.
Correct.
Right? So that would solve that one problem. The second one is, the cars that are coming south, that are going to want to go to the beach, now will not be able to cut down Crescent, which might not be a bad thing, because they do speed down that road to get to the beach, try to cut off the light. So they, ninety percent of them go into the light today, and take that left-hand turn there, versus using that Crescent Street. But if it becomes an issue, then we have the ability to turn it back. But, I've had a lot of concerns down there also with regards to coming down from Newport, and being able to take the right-hand turn, and if there'll be enough room there as well. So, I think we really got to pay attention to what's going on there.
But when we talked about the slip lane before, and I recall that, and Pat, was that, that was one of the big concerns, of people not paying attention and trying to beat the traffic. And that was the concern about if the, the strong emphasis on pedestrian safety down in that area. Counselor Flynn?
So just to add to the conversation, I remember in one of the public hearings, they kind of started with the roundabout issue at one point in time, that's what they were advertising, they were, they wanted to put in, they, the DOT, two roundabouts, one at Valley and Aquidnic, and one at Purgatory and Aquidnic, and, you know, people came out from the neighborhood and, you know, gave their two cents. And, and one of the hearings more recently, Karen Rourke, who was on the town council a number of years ago, she actually said in her recollection, the discussion was to make Crescent one-way in the, the other direction. I think it's, you know, six and one-half dozen of another with impact of that. If you're on Aquidnic and Crescent is one-way towards Purgatory, you're going to hold up traffic on Aquidnic trying to make that, that left, if you're, if you're going south. If it's one-way going onto Aquidnic, you're just adding more traffic onto an already congested road. So I, I'm not sure that either way, one-way is a good idea. And I have to tell you, recently, the way they've got that new island in front of Beach Liquor, I was on Briarwood, going, turning left onto Aquidnic Avenue, and someone was coming out of Crescent, and they were going to take a right onto Aquidnic Avenue. And we essentially started going at the same time, and that island is not very wide. I, I think if somebody's, and I saw them before I continued my turn left, but I think that you're asking, with the stimulation down there, people are going to miss that, because it's not an intersection where you're seeing the other drivers coming into the same spot. I wanted to put that out there, so everybody knew that it's a concern.
Thank you. Good topic, good points. Okay. Anything else? Item number thirty-nine, this is an ordinance of the town of Middletown, this is the first reading. An ordinance and amendment to the town code, title seven, traffic code. New section, Buck Road Extension is designated as a one-way from Buck Road, heading in an easty direction to Forest Avenue. See attached.
Motion to receive said ordinance on its first reading.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second to receive on the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any conversation?
Question?
Counselor Flynn.
Uh, it's already signed.
Yeah.
It's already signed, but when we looked at the ordinance and, and the clerk's office was looking at that ordinance as an example of an ordinance for Crescent Street, and when we looked at it, we realized it talked about authorized signage, but it never said the, the road was designated as a one-way. All it said was, we're putting up one-way signs.
Right.
So this is an administrative test?
So this is, this is cleaning up the ordinance from what should have happened several years back.
Okay. Any other conversation?
No, that's what I was going to say, because I was on the council when, I actually voted against it, because I thought it should have been, when residents pay taxes, it should be, they pay taxes, I thought it should have been, you know, a two-way street anyway, I hate taking things away from people. Um, you know, especially there when they had that flood down the bottom of, of Ludlow Road, and people couldn't get out, because that road wasn't, wasn't, that extension hadn't been constructed yet, because Forest Farm Assisted Living or Senior Housing over there hadn't been constructed. So, I'll probably vote against it this time, because I still think it should be, they pay taxes, they should have a second form of ingress and egress, or egress, uh, uh, out of there. Doesn't make sense.
Okay. Item number forty, Town Council Matters, continued from April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, a regular meeting at the request of Councilman Body. Resolution of the council with the closure of supported legislation to establish a Motion State Climate Adoption and Resilience Fund. O S C A R.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Okay, a motion, a second to pass, all in favor?
Aye.
Anton Viveras, Mister Viveras?
Are we going to have discussion before we pass it?
Well, you want, you want, you, you put into talk on item number forty, correct? Okay.
Did we just pass it? As opposed to receeded?
We received it.
Devoted at that time, only heard one.
No, but it's, it's a pass resolution, we said motion.
Okay, okay, conversation, Mister Viveras, come on up.
Anton Viveras, one ten Indian row. After the information that I sent the, the council pertaining to climate change, uh, as it shows that they've been forecasting climate warm, warming, global warming, uh, since nineteen twenty-two. And nineteen seventy-five, they predicted an ice age. And now they're back to global warming. And the last research I did, they found that Greis, uh, Greenland is, uh, the ice, is forming again. So, through the years, uh, we haven't been able to either hurt or destroy the environment. If we learn to take care of what we make, I think it would go a long way. But Mother Nature, she holds all the cards. And I always say, we don't have any more dinosaurs, because the environmental change, environment changed, and they didn't adapt. So it's not for us to force her to adapt to what we want. It's for us to clean up our own mess, and to be more conservative, conservative with what we, what we do and what we put into the earth. But I believe that this climate change, that you have scientists that don't agree with it, you have scientists that do, and then you have elected officials who the only thing they know is finding new sources of revenue. CO2 is, is dropping. Uh, they want, want a lower CO2, uh, carbon dioxide levels, yet we exhale carbon dioxide. And our vegetation take in carbon dioxide and produce oxygen. So, you know, maybe we should have, should not breed as often, I don't know. But it sort of sounds kind of ridiculous, ridiculous to me. You, you want to remove carbon dioxide, and yet we introduce carbon dioxide, which vegetation needs, our trees and vegetation needs, to give us oxygen so we can survive. So I just think that this whole thing is just a revenue grab. I really don't think it, we, we, uh, ban plastic bags, because people just throw them anywhere, and that causes a problem. Same thing with smoking, we had to ban smoking, because, you know, you go to Seven-Eleven, and right at the front door, there's two big trash containers with ashtrays on the top, and there's ass, butts all over the ground. So who do you blame? Are we going to have, are we going to, are we going to create a fund so we can pay people to go to the parking lots and pick it up cigarette butts? I mean, I really don't think that this is, this is the way to go. I really think this is just a money grab, a way to, as I say, uh, pick our pockets. I think the money can be used better, uh... It's just going to add to more taxes, it's going to cost the residents of the town and the state more money. And we see what's happening with New York, and California, and even Connecticut. People are leaving because of the taxes, they can't afford it anymore. And I don't want to see this happen to the state of Rhode Island, especially to Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Viveras. Chris, Chris, uh, Counselor Santos?
Oh, go ahead.
Chris Hamlet, go, go ahead, Chris, name and address, please.
Christopher Hamlet, um, I'm here on behalf of Save the Bay and our members in Middletown, so Save the Bay's one hundred, Save the Bay Drive in Providence, Rhode Island. Um, thank you, Counselor, for introducing this resolution. Um, climate change is actually happening now. Our, we have the oldest tide gauge in the country here in Newport, and, um, seas have risen nearly a foot in the last hundred years, and that's measured. Where I think all of the coastal communities around here, especially Aquidnic Island communities, are seeing and feeling the effects of more intensive storms, coastal erosion, and all the impacts that go with it. There are things we can do about that. Um, this legislation, uh, that the resolution supports, will set up a, a, a fund for outright grants to cities and towns, not requiring any match by the cities and towns. Uh, if passed, this resolution, the, the legislation will also qualify the state for millions in federal, uh, grant dollars, uh, which does require a match. for millions in federal grant dollars, which does require a match. So, but the, the kinds of projects that are needed here in our state are dealing with erosion, loss of infrastructure. There are culverts along roads and bridges that were built for another era. And now we need to increase the tidal flow in and out of our marshes and reduce flooding. So there are a whole host of reasons to support the legislation. I will say, so, so the source, just to get at this gentleman's point, is a doubling of the oil, of, of the petroleum import fee from five to ten cents per barrel. So a barrel is forty-two gallons. So what that means at the, at the pump for the consumer is if you put ten gallons of gas in your tank, it's one penny. Just to give you a sense of the scope of it. All cities and towns would be eligible for this fund, and in turn, would be eligible for federal matching grants as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any conversation?
I think Mr.
Counselor Santos, any question?
Yes, I do. Once this goes before the House and the Senate, what are they looking for from the, from each city and town as far as money's go? They want, they're looking for something. Once it's passed both houses, both the Senate and the House, are they going to come back to the town and ask for money?
This legislation is an outright grant program, does not require any municipal match whatsoever.
Okay.
Basically compliance, correct?
I'm sorry?
Basically compliance with it?
Yeah, well, it sets, I mean, there's going to be a program established where cities and towns can apply for grants for projects. And you'll just have to meet their criteria for the, for the projects that are laid out.
Counselor Flynn.
So I just would like to ask Counsel Lombardi, how we got this, this package? How did this come about? Was this presented?
I had a request from someone at Save the Bay, and asked if we would, if I would put this resolution on the docket. I ran it by the council president, and he said it was okay to put it on.
So the.
I, I read it, I read it, I saw the proposed legislation. I have no problem with grants that are not matching for the cities and towns, number one. And number two, look at the flooding that's going on in, in this town, particularly down by the beaches, particularly down on the east side of town. And then if you go down to, to, to Second Beach, I think as Sean has told me in the past, we've lost a foot of beach a year since nineteen seventy-three at Second Beach, all due to erosion and sea level rise. I don't know how you refute that, and I don't know how you turn back the clock. But this is money that will help us somewhere down the road. I really believe that.
So Counsel Lombardi, I just wanted to know where all this paperwork came from? So it came from Save the Bay, essentially? Is that, okay, just, that was my first question.
Well, that's.
I, I did, so it's, just to clarify, that it's a fund for this, the, the state's going to create a dedicated fund to improve coastal infrastructure? That's the bottom line? Okay.
Natural and built.
Understood.
Yes.
So is there, so, and it's a dedicated fund, so will it at any time be able to convert into the state's general fund?
Well, that, that's, that's always the, always the big issue with the assembly. They generally don't like to do restricted accounts. I will say right now that the, there's that oil spill response fund now that generates two million dollars a year. In their wisdom or not, they're free to do whatever they want with the law. But that program has worked very, very well.
And.
The assembly can always amend whatever laws it passes.
Okay. And so, you know, in, out of respect and empathy for those who maybe don't believe in the climate change element of this resolution, you know, it is pretty much known that we're having the hundred-year storms once a year now. I mean, I, I don't think that that's a secret anymore. We're definitely, you know, there's no question that these things are happening, and there is erosion. Nobody's arguing that, that part of this, I don't think. But if the, the resolution could reflect the support of the fund, simply due to the impacts of the increasing sea level rise, the coastal erosion, flooding, storm surge, without mentioning climate change, you know, I went through this and I picked out the paragraphs that mentioned it, would that matter? Would it still be a valid resolution for what you're trying to do? If we just took out the reference to climate change?
Well, the, the bill that's before the assembly is the climate adaptation and resilience.
The resolution mirrors the bill.
Yeah, the resolution mirrors the bill.
So we could not alter our resolution in support of the bill, but without the climate change elements in it?
You're, go ahead, Counselor.
No, I'm just saying, why? I mean, the science is hard to refute, and it's part of it, is climate change.
There will, there's a, there's another side, as Mr. Viveras pointed out, that scientists will say, okay.
You could cherry pick that all night long, but.
I'm, I'm trying to support the fund and respect those who believe in the different science.
The resolution mirrors the buildings up at the State House. No matter whether we change it or not, if they pass it, that's the way it's going to get passed. So we can change anything we want in this thing. But the bottom line is, the resolution, as you read it, mirrors the state, the bill that's up at the State House. So the legislators are not going to change one, one word or one phrase, just because we ask them to.
No, no, I'm not saying to change the state one. Can the Middletown resolution support the bill and not say the elements of the climate change? I don't know.
I think it comes down to whether we support the bill or don't support the bill.
Move on.
I think that's what it comes down to. Counselor Toronto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everyone's kind of aware, I'm, I support a lot of nature, clean ocean, litter. I believe that we should take care of our resources. This climate, someone had said to me the other day, says, you know, that, the, the polar caps weren't here at one point. It's a fact, right? Polar caps weren't there, then the polar caps were, over time, expanded. Then they said, I think it's just going back to the way it was. That they're, they're shrinking again. And I said, well, I guess that's an argument. I don't know, I'm not smart enough. I'm, I work with computers all day, so I don't get into this environment as much. But when you, when the state wants to levy another tax, and then they're going to regulate the money and where it goes, two things is, I don't trust them. And Middletown doesn't ever end up on the right side when it comes to the government, the state of Rhode Island to give money out. So I feel like I'll be paying into something that I probably won't see much of. So I'm not going to support this.
Okay, any further conversation? Vice President.
I feel the same way Dennis does. I don't, nothing, I'm all, I think all of us for Save the Bay, right? I can't speak for everybody, but, and, and I appreciate the effort. I just don't trust the state. I say it almost every meeting, because I want it to be heard, that if they're going to take that money and it's not restrictive, forget it. And again, it's a gas tax, right? Or petroleum tax. So we have some of the highest taxes in the whole country. And that's today, where it might be one cent per, per gallon or ten gallons. That's today. But I don't look at today. I look at making decisions five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road. And once there's money that's allocated, it never comes back. It doesn't come out. So Middletown's been pretty successful at funding ourselves with infrastructure projects. Our residents have been very gracious to pass bonds, and, and we've done a lot of due diligence of, of fixing our infrastructure under the ground. We have a long way to go. I just can't see giving that money to the state, I'm sorry. And with no, and it could end up in the general fund, just like the, just like the lottery money was supposed to be for education years ago. Where is it? It's in the general fund. So decisions they make, I have no, no faith and no trust. I said at last meeting, the only thing I liked, the idea of President Trump, is build a wall, and that should be around the island to keep the state out.
Okay, any further conversation? Okay, we have a motion to pass that resolution, it has been seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. Okay, item number forty-one, continued from April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting. It's been requested that this be continued again until the May twentieth meeting.
Motion to continue the homestead exemption.
Second.
Yeah, a motion second to continue to the May twentieth meeting. Any further conversation?
I have a.
Counselor Toronto.
Do we have to print all this paper off one more time? I've got like four copies of this. So I just make a statement where I don't think we need another copy of this in the next one.
I agree.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to continue.
Mr. President?
Counselor Flynn.
Part of the discussion, item number forty-two is a, a segue to the homestead exemption. So part of the conversation would be to also continue.
Yeah, we'll get to number forty-two.
Okay.
There you go. Okay, motion second to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number forty-two, continued from April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting. Memorandum of Counselor Flynn, Neighborhood Stability. Do you want to continue the whole thing or just a section of that?
No, all, all number.
Motion to continue Counselor Flynn's Neighborhood Stability.
Second.
Okay, a motion second to continue. Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number forty-three, at my request, discussion and approval of summer schedule. June third, twenty nineteen, June seventeenth, twenty nineteen, July one, twenty nineteen, and August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. No documentation.
Motion to begin said discussion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion in regards to their proposed summer proposal, schedule?
Could you read those dates again slowly, please, Secretary?
All righty.
They're in the.
They're right in your paperwork. They're right in front of you, right on the agenda. But I will read them again.
No, 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 it's okay.
Do you have them?
It's okay, right here.
Okay, but for the public. June the third, twenty nineteen, June seventeenth, twenty nineteen, July one, twenty nineteen, August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Okay?
One, one comment, Mr. President?
Counselor Flynn.
July first is in the July fourth week. I don't know if that's an issue for anyone.
It's not for me.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Maybe an empty room.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved said summer schedule.
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Town Administrator, item number forty-four, Memorandum of the Finance Director to the Town Administrator with Enclosure Solid Waste and Recycling Service Agreement, R I, R R C F Y twenty twenty, F Y twenty twenty-one.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to receive. Mr. Brown.
I'll let Mark come up and talk a little bit about the details. But essentially, this is a contract that you approve annually. It is for the tipping fees associated with the Town's Refuge and Recycling Program. The, probably the most significant point is that the tipping fee of forty-seven dollars a ton has been locked in for both fiscal years twenty and twenty-one. I'll let, I'll let Mark go through the other details.
Okay, just a little point of housekeeping before you do that. I'm going to vote on receiving this, okay, right now. So we have a motion second to receive, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mark?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Before you is a memo regarding the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation contract for the fiscal year two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. As Sean mentioned, the fee for the forty-seven dollar per ton municipal solid waste is frozen. There are other items, and I'd also like to point out, F, that the rebate program has been revised to include one percent increase in the, in the qualifying percentages for fiscal year twenty-one, and notification that the rebate will terminate after that period. So right now, we receive around eight thousand dollars for that program per year. So I did want to mention that. The deadline for this application, the contract to be signed, is June twenty-eighth. Look forward to your approving.
Is there, is there, is there any way to lock in, to have discussions whether to lock in this rate a little longer?
No.
They, they do it every two years.
Mr. President?
And you're saying the rebate, so the rebate is what?
The rebate of our recycling rate. Since we have a high rate of recycling our products, we do get a rebate on that.
For two more years, and then they're doing away with it?
After twenty-one, yeah.
And what is the, where is the rebate? Sorry?
We have other people, we're ahead of you, Counselor Santos.
So did they, did they, did they give a reason why? Is it just money that they're going to keep instead of, you know, part of the original deal was, and I'm sure that's long gone, in two thousand six, two thousand seven, I remember going up there with then-administered Jerry Kempin and talking to them about that. One of the things we did, we got the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of trash bins for free, first time ever, because we gave up the first three or four years of, of the dividends from the recycling, because we, it was unknown how, how our recycling rate would be. Well, immediately, we, we had a great recycling rate, but we got that free. So we ended up making up, as I'm concerned, we made out of the deal. But I hate to see that go away. I mean, did they give any reason why, or?
The profit, it's, it's profitability of recycling. The recycling market is just not there.
But it could change.
They could, but.
Okay.
We used to also receive, like Sean just mentioned, money from the sales of their recycling to other countries. We haven't received that in the last couple of years. So this is just because we have a high recycling rate that we get the credit.
So we need to maybe look at a little something different budget time for our reserve? Because that money went to the reserve, right?
It, it was part, yeah, I mean, it flew through, flew, it flowed through the budget. It flew through.
It flew through.
It flew fluid.
Right, right, I understand.
Yes, sir.
All set, thank you.
Counselor Flynn.
So, thanks, Mark. The, in item number B, the fee increase, I just wanted to know how substantial that was.
I think we just had one incident a couple of years ago, so it's really not a big.
Not, not, so in, in Kristen's memo, she says that, you know, they're open to remain, you know, to continue working with, you know, the community on issues. Are there any other issues or things that are in conversation with her or ideas of discussion?
I'm unaware of any, I don't know if Sean is.
No, there, there are no open outstanding issues with Rhode Island Resource Recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Santos.
Asked and answered.
Okay. Any further conversation? Okay, good. Item number forty-five, Resolution of the Council, R E, Solid Waste and Recycling Service Agreement, R I, R R C F Y twenty twenty, F Y twenty twenty-one.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Yeah, a motion second to pass. Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number forty-six, Executive Session, pursuant to provisions of R I G L, sections forty-two, forty-six-two, forty-two, forty-six-four, and forty-two, forty-six-five, A two, potential litigation, five, land acquisition, St. George's, lease, M O U, West Main Road, collective bargain, I A F F Union, review, discussion, and/or potential action, and/or vote in executive session and/or open session.
Motion to recess open session, reconsidering the executive session.
Second.
And motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Nate.